I am going to call this town council meeting. Order as, so you took away my clock, 7:03. Everybody could stand for the pledge. Pledge allegiance to the
To the flag of the United States of America
And to the republic for which it stands.
One nation under God.
Indivisible, liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Hey, I can share my screen mic if you want for the agenda, or do you want to?
If you'd like to, you can. You have co-host rights.
All right, I am going to. So that's the 5:20. Just one. Nope.
Yeah, that's good.
Nope, that's not it, right? No, let me see. I have like eight million things open up here. That was future agendas. This is 5:26. Share screen. Here it is. All right. Is that it now?
Looks good.
Yeah.
Okay, then. Call of order, room of silence. We have no proclamations today. Public participation, public petitions, communications and public participation. Apparently, I'm having a hard time speaking today. Any subject within the jurisdiction of the town council, two-minute limit. If you are on a computer, if you could please. It does seem to get to my participation list here. If you could raise your hand, if you are calling in, you can star nine and that will raise your hand. If anybody has anything that they would like to bring to our attention right now, if you want to raise your hand. Going once. Going twice. Gone. All right, that gets us to six public hearing items. Consideration of a resolution to adopt an ordinance establishing a commission on people with disabilities. Actually, Mike, I'm gonna have you share your screen because mine is doing something weird now. I don't understand.
Okay, I'll leave yours up for a moment. I'm gonna need a second just to pull up the agenda, please.
That's fine. Take your time. It's just doing something weird on my screen here. I can't.
Okay, share. Okay, Tammy, I think you have to stop sharing your screen.
I'm gonna stop sharing, yeah. You go ahead.
Okay. Okay, uh, let's copy to Zoom. Let's see if this works. Okay. How's that look?
That works.
Okay. Very good. So we're up to public hearing item. There you go.
Okay, uh, public hearing item. Consideration of a resolution to adopt an ordinance establishing a commission on people with disabilities. So. Let's see. Uh, do you want to read the item summary and then we'll open it up for public comment?
Sure, I can do that. So this is Mike Rosen, town manager, speaking. The item summary for tonight is, uh, one of the goals of the town council was to explore the creation of a new commission on people with disabilities. Um, a survey had been sent out to residents a few months ago via Talon notification in the beginning of the year, asking if they thought there was a need for this type of commission in town. The results were in favor of establishing a commission on people with disabilities. Um, we've had several meetings and we've had feedback from residents and we also had a draft of what the, um, the commission would look like in terms of its membership. And, uh, back on May 12th, our last regular meeting, we had voted to set the public hearing tonight so that anybody in the public could speak about, um, whether or not they think that this is a good idea. And after the public hearing, um, it would be time for the council to decide if it's time to establish the commission on people with disabilities.
Okay, so, um, with that, I will accept a motion to open the public hearing.
Um, Madam Chair, Steve Jones, I would entertain that motion to open the public hearing.
This is Brenda Felusi. I second that.
Okay, all in favor. Brenda?
Aye.
Cassandra?
Aye.
Uh, Steve?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Lou?
Aye.
Kurt? And I am an aye. Lisa, that passes unanimously. So with that, the public hearing is open. If anybody has any comments or anything they would like to talk or ask about regarding this commission, that would be your time. Please raise your hand if you are in the, um, electronic version. If you are on the phone and would like to submit a comment, star nine to raise your hand.
Madam Chair, this is Mike Rosen. I just, while people are, um, getting their hands raised, I could just offer a little bit of background again. So, um, the reason that this is a public hearing tonight is because it's actually establishing an ordinance to create this new commission. So it's not something that the council could just do on its own. They needed to have a public hearing to do so. And then also for people that are following along from the packet at home, on page five of 76 of tonight's packet is the draft mission statement that we had put together, um, quite a, back in March, quite a few months ago. And, um, it talks about the mission statement of what the commission is looking to do, as well as the draft of who shall make up the commissions. So, um, basically, the public hearing will cover all of these aspects tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. So with that, then, I guess I'll read the draft mission statement. That way, if anybody has any questions on that, um, we'll have that there. The goal of the Talon Commission on People with Disabilities is to provide information, education and advocacy for the entire community by embracing the contribution of its citizens with disabilities and to create a more inclusive talent. The commission will research and advise town council on issues relevant to our citizens with disabilities. The commission will offer support for legislative initiatives that promote equality and accessibility for people with disabilities. Invite speakers from both the public and private sector to discuss topics of concern to the disability community. Explore additional state, federal and grant funding resources. Analyze the services for persons with disabilities provided by the community, both the public and private agencies, and make recommendations to the town council regarding their findings. The Commission on People with Disabilities is a seven-member commission. Such members shall be electors of the town and not more than five members shall belong to the same political party. To the fullest extent possible, the commission shall make up, I'm sorry, shall be made up of a majority of members who are persons with disabilities who or who regularly work with or provide services to persons with disabilities. Members shall be appointed by the town council for terms of up to three years. Two members with a one-year term, two members with a two-year term, three members with a three-year term. After initial appointments, all future appointments shall be for three-year terms or until the successor shall be appointed by the town council. All public meetings shall be held at the call of the chair and at such times and locations as the commission may determine. And I do not see anybody with their hand up. So with that, um, Steve, I will accept a motion to close the public hearing.
Yes, Madam Chair, I entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Um, all those in favor?
Are you not able to see our hands if they're up?
Oh, no, I can't see anybody's hands up.
My hand is up.
Who, who is that speaking?
This is Deirdre Goldsmith.
Yes, hello.
Huh. Mike, you're not seeing anybody, are you?
No, I believe, uh, Deirdre, have you activated the function, the hand raise function, or are you doing it the old-fashioned way? With the camera?
Well, I was, I was just following the instructions Tammy had said to just raise our hands and I have my, uh, the camera on, so I thought she'd be able to see me.
Actually, I can't see at all, Deirdre. Where are you?
Hello.
Hold on, keep writing. I'm looking. Does anybody see her?
Nope.
No.
Well, I'm here and I also wanted to express my support for the commission and also for participating in the commission.
Okay.
Deirdre Goldsmith, 21 Marlborough Glade.
Thank you, Deirdre. Um, so yes, after, afterwards, if you are interested in being on the commission, then we're gonna have, you can definitely send in information. We'll be gathering all of that and I highly, um, encourage it. You're not even showing up, like, do you see her showing up on the list at all?
I see, I do, I do see a hand raised now from John's iPad, it's called, but, um, I don't see a Deirdre's hand up. I, I think it was, Deirdre might have been doing it with, in the camera, so it didn't come up through the functionality of, you know, the actual software.
Hmm, okay. Let's see. Well, thank you, Deirdre. Thank you for, for, uh, speaking out when we didn't catch you.
Thank you.
All right, um, John, John's iPad.
This is John's iPad. This is Sue Hughes. I couldn't get online. I, I can't even imagine. This is the most important thing that I've been looking forward to and, and all Zoom meetings have worked for me till now, but John's iPad. And we couldn't raise our hands, so.
That's really weird.
So I wanted to say I thank the town council for, for, um, you know, supporting this and, 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 and for this. Um, I know there are a, a number of families in town that, that are, have been working so hard to make something like this happen and, and I think that, um, this is gonna be a really positive experience for everyone. It might be difficult at times, but, um, it's going to result in a better talent. So thank you for, for having this for us. We totally support.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, and Susan, can you just list out your address just for the record for our secretary to have in the minutes?
Susan Hughes, 777 Talon Stage Road, Talon Connect.
Thank you.
Okay, does anybody else have their hand up that I can't see? If so, just speak.
I don't see anything. I don't see any other hands.
I don't see anything either, then. Okay, so with that said, there's a motion on the table to close the public hearing. So, um, all those in favor?
This is Brenda Felusi. I second that motion.
I thought, did somebody, I thought it was already seconded, was it not?
It was just a motion.
For the second.
So Brenda has seconded. Brenda? Are you in favor?
Yes, aye.
Cassandra?
Just go for it.
Aye. Steve?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Lou?
Aye.
Kurt? And I am an aye, so that is unanimous. We will close the, the public participation part of this and that gets back to us counselors. So, um, last meeting, we briefly reviewed the Commission on People with Disabilities. We didn't get into all the comments and that because it was pretty late in that, but overall, I was, I was happy to see that the overwhelming majority of citizens are in favor of this commission. An area that I looked at specifically was the anything else for the commission to provide area. This section had some great suggestions and areas identified as potential needs and things to look into. Um, I look forward to seeing the list of applicants for this commission. We had quite a few people respond back positively, so that leads me to believe that this is something that we may see a pretty varied interest in of, of people coming forward to be on the commission and I am very eager to see it, um, started. Uh, I want to thank all of the parents who came forward early on and the, um, members of our community themselves and thank you for being advocates for your family, for yourselves and for our town. We're all one town, one team, one vision here and, um, I just, I'm looking forward to this. I'm extremely happy to have it up for a vote and with any good luck tonight, it's gonna become a commission and then, um, we get to start looking at the, the bylaws and how it's gonna function and I am eagerly awaiting, um, reports from this commission on what we as a town can do to be sure that we are always thinking inclusively. So, um, I'm thrilled about this. Does anybody else have anything that they want to, um, discuss right now? Sure.
Steve has his hand up.
Steve?
Uh, Steve Jones, I was just gonna ask if we should make the motion to, um, approve the commission and then go into any discussion after that, or would you rather have discussion and then make the motion?
Um, I was gonna do discussion first just because of the public hearing aspect of it. They talked, we talked, then do it, but if you want to do, make, make, make the motion now, that's fine too, either way.
Um, no, that's fine. I'll, we can do the discussion first and I'll yield to, uh, Councilman Felusi to speak first. I have a few questions, but they may get answered before I speak again.
Brenda?
Okay, um, so the, the first thing I wanted to ask was, um, is there going to be a budget for this commission? I noticed, taking a look at our budget, um, that we have later on in our document, that some of our commissions do have budgets. I'm a s- I'm going to go out on a limb and assume that there will be some needs for this commission, um, such as maybe interpretive in accessibilities. Um, there might be some office and we also have to take a look possibly at staff support. Um, I want to make sure that this commission has the tools it needs to succeed. So I wanted to ask about that. Um, I was also wanted to ensh- make sure, um, that it was clear that the wording for this would allow, um, family members of individuals with disabilities. Um, it, it seems like it might not have been too clear on that. It said provide services or work with, but I think that, um, even though it maybe assumes that family members provide services, we could be talking about a sibling, um, who might not fall underneath that definition. Um, and I wanted to find out the relationship. I assume the town of Talon has an ADA compliance officer and I wanted to, um, ensure that we, that this commission had a working relationship with that person.
Okay.
Um, to make sure that all the tools are there for success.
Anybody else have anything? Steve, did you have anything? You wanted to come back on or no?
Sorry, I had to step away for a moment. Um, no, actually Brenda asked the questions. I was gonna inquire as to, to the town manager mostly. Um, who would be the responsible staff member to, uh, to this commission as well as, um, what the anticipated fiscal note would be uh, on a first time as well as annual basis for the commission?
Sorry, I have one more question. This is Brenda Felusi. It says that, uh, electors and, um, electors means, um, registered voters in the town of Talon. That excludes a number of our residents who may have like dual citizenship um, and who may, you know, who can't register to vote. Is it a requirement that we use the term electors or can we just use, um, the term residents of Talon?
Well, hmm, so, Mike, I guess, uh, what is the assumption in the dual membership part? Why that would?
Uh, as far, this is Mike Rosen, town manager. As far as I know, um, I would, I would obviously need to check with the town clerk on that. I believe all of our boards and commissions are comprised of-
Are only electors.
Correct. They're only comprised of folks that are registered voters in the town. That's hence the terminology on that. That's also because we have the minority representation clause in Connecticut. So you have to have, um, party partisan politics, in, when you select members of the, any board or commission, you have to, you can't have, uh, all of one party. So even if somebody's an independent or unaffiliated, that still goes against the majority, um, representation. So I do believe elector is the proper terminology.
Yeah, that's what I thought too. Uh, I, I figured it, yeah. As far as a budget for this commission, I know when we've talked about it in the past and with parents and that, I don't think the intent was for it to start out with a budget. Not all commissions have budgets. Um, the first part of it is gonna be exploration and everything. I think if there's a need, it would have to come up from this commission and we would have to look at it, but Mike?
Yeah.
Is that, that's pretty much where?
Yeah, I can, I can, um, address some of, um, Brenda's comments and questions. I think that, so I can say with certainty that we have not budgeted any money towards this commission for next year since it hasn't been established yet until tonight. Um, potentially, it hasn't happened yet, but there's nothing in the budget for next year in terms of, um, either, uh, office supplies or, um, staffing for, for minutes and things like that. Um, the, obviously, we're happy to provide administrative support like we do for all boards and committees with making copies, posting agendas, things like that. We can help out with that. That's relatively no additional cost except for the supplies that we would probably just absorb in the town manager's office. Um, the staffing, that's to be determined. Um, I don't know. I, 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 it's been speculated about certain people in town that have, um, you, you know, what, what, um, relationship they'd have to this committee. So, for example, the Director of Human Services. I've heard the Assistant Director of Human Services. I've also heard, um, about ADA compliance officer will offer the staff. That's actually the Director of Administrative Services, Mr. Wilkinson is that role. So, um, it's a kind of a, a, a mixed right now that we would need to figure out who would be the staff support. This seven-member commission that we're establishing tonight is purely the folks that are gonna be serving terms, not the staff liaisons. That's, that could be fleshed out later. Or it could also be done when, when the committee is actually established, they could talk about who would make sense to be the most, um, appropriate staff member to work with them. And then furthermore, if they can take their own minutes, like some committees do in town, or if they would need paid help. And that's something that the commission would probably suss out after a few meetings, I would, I would guess.
Yeah, I think we need to establish it and, um, and then kind of go from there. And like you said, the staffing, it could be any multiple, depending on what they're looking at and what, what they, what, what items they're reviewing. It could be a multitude of people that could be involved to help.
Correct.
And as far as the, the wording, allowing family members with disabilities, I think that's what, what, who regularly work with or provide services. Correct, that's.
Yeah, my, my concern is, uh, a sibling might not fall under those categories. Somebody, you know, is getting nitpicky about it. Um, a, a sibling might not be considered someone who provides services or works with. You know, so I just wanted to try to be very inclusive.
Uh, this is Lou Lubah, uh, just a comment on that, um, that I think that it says inside the, uh, resolution itself to the fullest extent possible. So it doesn't foreclose other possibilities. It just says to the, to the fullest extent possible, which leaves it open so that if it's something that somebody falls outside that scope, that it's still, the town council still has the ability to, uh, to, uh, appoint that person, uh, that the, uh, without, without having to worry about being excluded. That's, you know, uh, I think that that would, uh, as far as legal, uh, legal terminology and legal, uh, purview of that, that's how it will be interpreted.
This is, uh, Mike Rosen, town manager. Um, uh, the town clerk was good enough to send me a message just now that the charter states that the commission members must be electors, so that is the correct terminology. And, um, and I would also, um, in, uh, in terms of whether we stipulate, I guess if we, I have no issue if the council wants to put another phrase in there about, uh, families of people with disabilities or something like that, that's, that's fine. I guess we, we can't narrow down every particular scenario, but that, that's perhaps a good one that we should enumerate if that's what you believe.
Yeah, this is Brenda Felusi. Um, I, I believe that siblings bring a, um, different point of view to the table. Um, and that would be very beneficial. To have that, especially since, since we're gonna be creating the commission now, we're going to have an overabundance, I assume, of people applying. And in order to have, um, an inclusive and broad membership, um, to allow a sibling, um, you know, who's grown up, you know, with someone with disabilities, the point of view would be, uh, I think they're very beneficial.
So I guess I'm wondering, are you seeing this as a sibling who's taken care of or working with or providing services or just a sibling who's grown up with someone? Because I think it was pretty important for us to make sure that the people who are on the commission are people who are, um, very intimately daily interacting with the person with disabilities and helping to establish that their needs, not necessarily someone that just grew up with them, but someone that is actively participating in in their caretaking if they can't do it themselves.
I, I think there's a, um, this is Brenda Felusi. I think there's a wide range here and, um, knowing families, um, that have members with disabilities, um, a sibling isn't a primary caregiver, caretaker or caregiver all the time, um, but can be part of the support system. And they have, um, again, a, a perspective that and knowledge that would be beneficial. I just, I don't want to exclude someone um, on, you know, a point of order or a little, you know, little bit of words. So. I, I, I think that a sibling has the experience just as caregiver would in many cases.
So Mike, from the perspective of people applying for this,
Yes.
Say, like, we get, I'm hoping we get 35-plus applicants. The town council is going to go through and vet them. So that would be, I believe, what Lou and Steve, correct? Because this is a-
Mm-hmm. Uh, may, maybe if, if you don't mind, maybe let me start at the beginning. So after the commission is established, we will put the word out via the Talon notification system and social media that the commission has been established and we're recruiting for the seven vacancies. Um, they can either apply using the email address vacancies@talon.org or they can call the town manager's office at our number 860-871-3600. Either way, I believe if you call the office, they will, um, ask you to apply through the website, uh, as well, just if you, if you're able to. Um, so that they have, you, they ask for some background information, your resume or qualifications and things like that. So that'll be the process. And let's say we get 30 people, like you said, Tammy. Then, uh, then the, the combination of Lou Lubah and Steve Jones will go through and interview the, I, I guess all of them, all, anyone who's qualified. And, um, sorry, guys, it's gonna be a lot of work, but, uh, they'll have to narrow it down to seven recommendations and then the council will act upon those seven recommendations.
Right, so at that point, I'm just thinking if, if, um, if I was sending in for I don't know that we'd want to get too specific or not specific on this. If we want to, like, honestly, I would like to see more people with disabilities applying as self-advocates. And then after that, if there other people who regularly work with or provide services, I'm not thinking like, that, I think family is in, in that assumption, who regularly work with or provide services. You know, I, I think it's kind of all in there and at that point, we're gonna have to, every appointment that comes from the town council will have to be vetted and then we'll have to approve it if somebody points out, hi, I'm a sister or I'm a, you know, mom, either way. I'm wondering if we just handle it in the process of the, of the people who are reviewing, but we've got a few people with their hands up. So Lou?
Uh, thanks, Tammy. I've already, I've already addressed my comment on that issue. I think that, um, that as it says, the fullest extent possible, that means that it's not something that's, it does not say shell, but to the fullest extent possible. So if we find, Steve, myself, or any future, uh, future members on the appointments, uh, committee feel that somebody meets with that criteria or meets something that's not specifically enumerated there, that we don't have to follow specifically saying what the letter is there, because it says simply to the fullest extent possible. So that's, that's my position on it, but thank you.
Thank you, Lou. Um, Kurt?
Hey, Tammy. Um, I think, um, we, I don't know why we couldn't add in immediate family members. I think that's an important part. You know, I, I don't, I wouldn't imagine people, family members would consider themselves, you know, caretakers, it's family, but as, I, unless we're gonna have to hold, do this whole public hearing and add in, you know, the phrase, um, immediate family members. I, I don't see why we couldn't add it. This is my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you, Kurt. Steve?
Steve Jones, um, I was gonna make a recommendation potentially, kind of meet in the middle if this might be amendable to all parties. So I would read it as, to the fullest extent possible, the commission shall be made up of a majority of members who are persons with disabilities or who regularly work with, provide services or in, and/or interact with persons with disabilities. Therefore, that the notion of interacting with would be assumed or implied that family members, uh, who are residents and electors of the town could be considered for the position of a, being on, on the commission.
I think that's, that's broader. I like the idea of it being broader than more narrowed down. Um, that works for me if, um, if that works for everybody else.
This is Lou Lubah, second that amended, uh, amended language.
Okay, um.
So for the record, should we repeat that for the clerk?
Uh, yes, Steve Jones, I can, I can repeat that. I'll check. I kind of did it off of verbatim, so I'll just try and repeat. So, um, the motion would be to amend the language of the resolution to be written as, to the fullest extent possible, the commission shall be made up of a majority of members who are persons with disabilities or who regularly work with, provide services and/or interact with persons with disabilities.
Okay, do we have any other, uh? Okay, do we have any other, uh, conversation regarding the, uh, the commission on persons with disabilities? Okay. Oh, Steve's hands up again.
I was just gonna say, say, seeing none, I was gonna entertain a motion to, um, let me just pull the draft resolution up here. That be it, be resolved by the Talon Town Council hereby establishes a commission on people with disabilities and hereby approves the following to be approved by the Talon Town Council on May twenty-six, twenty-twenty, as amended.
So you had a motion and a second on the floor, so you should probably vote on the amendment first and then vote on the overall resolution. Yep.
Okay, so the, on, on the amendment to the resolution. All right, all those in favor? Brenda?
Well, this is Brenda Felussy and I'll second that amendment.
No, Lou already seconded it.
Oh, I missed that. I'm sorry. I'll second it.
So are you an approval? Are you?
Uh, yes, I'm sorry, I approve.
Cassandra?
Approved.
Steve?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Lou?
Aye.
Kurt?
Aye.
I am a yes, so Lisa, that passes unanimously. And we have the second motion now that to actually put the draft resolution through establishing the commission.
As amended.
As amended. Can I get a second?
I would second it. Lou Lubah.
Thank you, Lou. All those in favor? Uh, Brenda?
Aye.
Cassandra?
Aye.
Steve?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Lou?
Aye.
Kurt?
Aye.
Absolutely for me. So Lisa, that passes unanimously. We now have a commission on people with disabilities. Congratulations to all those who lobbied us for this. And I so look forward to the work that is going to be done here. That gets us to, I feel anticlimactic to go on to the next thing now. Now I feel like we all need like a round of applause or something like. Um, Mike, what is next on the agenda there, my friend?
Uh, reports of boards and, oh, sorry, reports of boards and committees. So.
All right, let me get back here.
So seven A, we're on seven A right now.
Seven A. Reports of boards and committees responsible to the council. Okay, uh, do we have any this week?
Yes.
Okay, Brenda?
Brenda Felussy, I have two committees. Um, one is Sustainable CT, but that is later, I believe, on the agenda. Um, we have the memo for the annual report, so I'll wait for that. Um, our census, we are currently at seventy-nine point two percent, uh, reporting rate for the town of Talon. The, um, next closest town is Marlboro with seventy-nine percent. So they're catching up to us. We need to get some more people, uh, reporting. Um, Talon's self-reporting rate ten years ago was eighty-two point four percent. So we're within target of that. Some towns that are close to us, um, Vernon is at sixty-seven point nine. Ellington is seventy-three point four. Wellington is sixty-six point four. And Coventry, who, as you know, we have a friendly wager with, is at seventy-one point eight percent. So they are also within firing range of us. They can get close to us.
There's a deadline. There had to be a deadline.
There is a deadline. The deadline, I believe, is June first. And, um, it looks like, you know, at the, and that's six days away. So please go to twenty-twenty census.gov and, um, Phil, please report your census. It takes five to ten minutes, depending on how many people are in your households. Um.
Listen, I'm attempted, I'm tempted to go around the council and see and ask if everybody has done it. I've already done mine. Tell me everybody else has done it. We need the numbers.
Already done.
See, that's two of us down.
I don't know if, Mike, was there any other reporting on that or?
No, that, that's it, Brenda. Um, yeah, John and I did, uh, dueling Facebook messages earlier this week, so we're, we are, yeah, we're honoring that June first bet. So, uh, we're gonna feed our first responders. Hopefully it's gonna be Coventry paying.
Excellent. Thank you. So those are my two committees. I thank you for the time.
Thank you. Um, let's see, I thought I saw Birch Grove Katie on, but I wasn't sure. I thought I saw her. Is she here?
Yes, I'm here.
Oh, all right. Katie, do you have a, do you have an update for us?
Sure I do. Um, I have a prepared statement that I guess I would ask it, um, put in the rec, in the minutes in its entirety. I'm Katie Murray, Chair of the Birch Grove Building Committee. As a volunteer chair of this project, I've dedicated hundreds of hours of my time towards facilitating, on behalf of the town of Talon, the project with project team professionals in the state of Connecticut. I'm happy to report that the project team in the state have been amazing to work with and together we have built a strong and knowledgeable team to meet the needs of the Birch Grove Primary School Project. This project was deemed an emergency by the state of Connecticut and was fast-tracked due to the extenuating circumstances. Fast-tracking this project was in the best interest of the town of Talon. And while the timeframe of this project has at times added a layer of complexity and frustration, we had nowhere to house our students for the twenty-nineteen to twenty or twenty-two, twenty-one academic years. So time is of the essence. In the normal progression of a project, the total cost would have been commissioned based on long-term planning and six to nine months of design work. The building committee would have reviewed plans and recommended a total project cost to go to referendum based on the actual design of the project. To give perspective, perspective in a quote-unquote "normal" project timeline, the building committee would have made recommendations to town council in January of this year and the cost we would have arrived at would have been between forty-eight and forty-nine million dollars. We did not have time to go through a normal process. This project is essentially a design build. Our project team, including J C J Architecture, DeMato Construction, CAP and the state of Connecticut have been dedicated to designing and building a project which meets the needs of the town of Talon. We are required to comply with the state of Connecticut's standards and guidelines for school construction, which provide consistent, clear information for towns and establish a uniform level of quality and cost for all of Connecticut's public school buildings. They are the culmination of standards, best practices, accepted procedures, statutory and regulatory requirements, and the experience of experts and authorities across the United States. Every element in developing this facility has been designed or decided upon based on three priorities. Number one, educational specifications. These were defined by the Superintendent and Board of Education. A fundamental tenet of educational facility planning is that school buildings must respond to the educational program. The state requires that towns design instructional spaces to be flexible and adaptable so that we are better able to accommodate future educational program delivery models. Number two, reimbursability. Priority number two is to maximize the reimbursement rate for this project. When the legislation passed in July twenty nineteen, awarding Talon an eighty-nine percent reimbursement rate, the fiscal burden or financial burden of this project further moved off the property taxpayers in town. The project team, the building committee, and I'm sure all Talon residents want to maximize this reimbursement rate to get the best value possible for the lowest price tag. Number three, the best decision for Talon and for the town. The Birch Grove facility meets community needs outside of the school day. The playground is often used by children while their siblings are playing sports on the adjacent fields. The interior space is used for town recreation, to house scouts, knitting club, and other community activities. Furthermore, the project can assume some costs that the town would have otherwise had to pay in the future. And by incorporating these items into the project, are now eligible for an eighty-nine percent reimbursement. Directly saving the town money we would otherwise have to pay to maintain this facility. I am sure our town manager and superintendent can speak in great detail about these cost savings. The project team has met the challenge of time constraints with an open mind and a lot of flexibility. The three priorities were considered with every decision and we were all hoping that the bid packages would come back within the forty-six million dollar project. This is not what happened, however. The project cost brought to the building committee last week was almost forty-eight point five million dollars. The building committee has asked for further reductions, even though value engineering or cost-saving reductions have been extensive and ongoing since January. Honestly, there is not a lot left to cut from this project, but the team is going through the plans. Creative, out-of-the-box thinking has been applied and all members of the team are making contributions. I'm holding on to hope that the building committee will be presented with cost-saving options to bring the total project cost down to forty-six million dollars at our special meeting on Thursday. However, in order to do that, some compromises are going to need to be made. And the trifecta of the project priorities will not be maximized. As the educational specifications are required and maximizing reimbursability has already been incorporated, room for cuts exist in items which would have otherwise saved the town money, either directly or indirectly. I am disappointed and frustrated to see the project move in this direction. I am further discontented to have to bring this news to you as the body with fiscal responsibility for our town. Our town has a one-time opportunity to rebuild the school with an unprecedented amount of state aid. We will never again be in this position. We will never again be offered eighty-nine percent reimbursement rate. It was my hope that we could use this reimbursement rate not only to develop, deliver a quality school such as one we have come to expect in Talon, but also to offset future capital expenditures. It is regrettable that the lack of emphasis on long-term planning and the drive to look at the bottom line without any context or considerations outside of dollar signs is the position we are in. The Birch Grove project will proceed, but not as the gem it should be, for the project will fall short of its potential of blending our schools more closely into our community. The opportunity to model smart fiscal decisions within our school system to actualize savings to our whole town will be lost. A lot of time, effort, sweat, and tears have gone into the Birch Grove project to get us here. I come to you as the building committee chair to report that I am committed to finding solutions and am applying my time and effort to this end. Thank you.
Thank you, Katie. Um, reports of town council liaisons. Um, Brenda?
Okay, um, let me bring up my little note here. Oh, very easy. Uh, this is Brenda Felussy. Blights was canceled last week and planning and zoning, uh, yesterday was a holiday, so they did not have a meeting. That's it.
Okay, Cassandra?
I don't think I have any reports for you.
That's okay. I don't, I think you was only, I think you may have had yours last time, so that's fine.
Yes, I did.
Steve?
All right, I'll just meet myself. So there was a water commission last Monday that I was unable to attend, though I did get a brief update from uh, Beverly and I would defer to the minutes of that meeting for further details. Um, I did attend the conservation commission meeting. Um, at that meeting, they did update that they have about three thousand dollars for the mountain bike trail. Um, they are going through the rough cut or the rough blazing portion of the project. Um, they're now looking into bringing materials in and finding a suitable location to store those materials to create bridges and other, um, notable infrastructure for the mountain bike trails. That's, you know, very positive development. It's moving right along. Um, otherwise they're working on further, uh, updating development plans for, uh, other trails across the community. And I believe they have just released or released it in the last week or so, the photo contest. So you can go to their conservation page and their Facebook page to look at that if you want to submit a photo or a poem, uh, to win a gift card to a local business. And that's all I have for now.
Um, John?
Debbie just said they don't meet, so I have nothing to report today.
Lou?
Uh, yes, uh, that, um, is a member of the Birch Grove Building Committee. Katie already.
Did we lose you, Lou? Looks like Lou may have frozen. In the meantime, um, Kurt?
I have no, nothing to report. Make it easy.
Okay.
Uh, the fiscal responsibility.
You're back, Lou. Lou, you were frozen. Like you froze and now you're back.
You gotta start over.
You gotta start all over again.
All right. What's the last thing you heard?
Uh, Birch Grove Building Committee.
So, um, that we, um, that as a member of the committee, that, uh, I can tell you that, uh, Katie gave a very good summary, uh, but that as a committee member, as well as other committee, uh, committee members that I've spoken to, we are taking this matter very seriously, that, uh, we understand what, uh, what our role is and that we are trying to do the best that we can for the town of Talon to make this the, uh, the, the gem that we want it to be, but also understanding that the, uh, the fiscal responsibility that we have to the town as well as, uh, although there is a, uh, a promise for reimbursement, that, uh, understanding that, uh, that, that there are still issues that need to be, uh, worked through and that may not be, uh, may not be part of a reimbursement, um, such as the, uh, the soil issues and other things like that. So that we're looking at all, all issues and we're looking forward to getting the additional information, uh, once we have this meeting on, uh, this upcoming Thursday. Thank you.
Thank you, Lou. That gets to me. Um, we've had a, well, we had a joint meeting with the, with a board event meeting where they reviewed a lot of things. They, um, actually established a task force to start reviewing and looking at, um, uh, graduation plans. There's going to be virtual graduation. Um, and then they are looking at options for doing an outdoor, um, traditional type graduation in July. I believe the dates are July sixteenth or July thirtieth right now. Um, they also went back and did review on, um, the budget, in which we had a joint meeting, everybody was at to look at, um, where they could find dollars that were available this year. Um, from monies that were left over to pre-purchase things, um, and remove them from next year's budget. We had the joint meeting to also discuss those things. They also, um, talked a lot about, uh, a lot of the uncertainty that's up in the air right now regarding what school is going to look like, um, in the fall. So there's a lot going on from the governor's office and from the CDC, which is releasing recommendations and guidelines. Um, those CDC guidelines will then be reviewed at a state-by-state level. Um, there is the commission that will be working on the education side to, um, firm that up, to roll out a plan for Connecticut. And then when that gets down to us, um, right now it just seems like a whole lot of, um, waiting and seeing and talking and trying to come up with what it's gonna look like. And there's a lot of uncertainty around, um, what public school looks like, um, after this. So rather than getting mired down in all the regulations and the what-ifs and the how-tos and the might be this and the might be that, I would just say that there's a lot of information out there. If you're looking at it, make sure you're looking at the CDC sites or the stateofconnecticut.gov sites to get the latest bit of information, um, in regards to that. Uh, I got an email today from my daughter's college in Massachusetts, starting to talk about stuff. So I think information is getting out. I think the colleges are probably reacting quicker with this information moving forward in a, um, a faster, um, I don't know, there, there just seem to be more information coming from them. I think it's probably a higher level. You have a lot of regulation that isn't there at the lower level. So just review it, look at it, um, be aware of it, um, something that we're gonna have to deal with next year on all aspects, whether it be school or town. Um, we did not have an EDC meeting. Um, and I think that's pretty much it for me. Um, I'm trying to think if there's anything else. I think that's about it. Uh, Brenda, your hand is up.
Yes, this is Brenda Felussy. I just don't know if we have time to discuss a couple of the thing, the, uh, reports that came up. I had a couple of questions for Steve about the conservation commission.
Um.
Sure, sure. So, um, Steve, you were talking about the bike trails. Um, do you happen to remember the length of the trails?
Oof. That's a tough, that is a tough one.
Right? The orange trail, then one that they're putting in first, I believe, is seven miles, right?
Yeah, give or take.
A bunch of squiggly ones in between the big orange one.
Yeah, it's, it's tough because it's gonna be a phased-in project and there's, uh, I've been out there once or twice since the blazing has started and, um, John, who's with Nembud, New England Mountain Bike Association, has created different color coatings for different has created different color coatings for different trails. So I think in total, it was going to be about seven miles looped around in various ways. I think the orange one is going to be the principal trail, but there'll be various color-coded trails that'll kind of interconnect. So if people need to take a break, they can kind of cut back and forth, shorter trails. And it also is still hiking trail. It's not primarily mountain bike. So people can walk there, they can walk their dogs, you know. It's primarily, you know, going to be utilized as a mountain bike trail and advertised as such, but it's still an open space for individuals to walk, walk and hike in snowshoe if they so fit.
Excellent. And for the mountain biking trails, is it only mountain biking on the trails? Or can people go off-trail to mountain bike? Do you happen to know?
Ideally, you want to stay on the trails. I'd have to defer to NEMBA and the Conservation Commission on that. But in general, it was more of a, if you go off the path, you're likely to cause more damage to the actual area versus the paved areas or the blazed areas, so.
Thanks.
There was a map that was shared. I don't think we got it, though, Mike. I know you shared it, I think, on the screen, but I'm not sure that it came out to everybody. That shows all the other interworking trails that are going to be done later, like all the zigzags in between all the big main orange one.
I believe it was posted on the town's website, actually. So we did put it out, but I can, I could put it back on the screen now if you're interested. I actually saved a photo of it.
And otherwise, I think it's in the minutes of the Conservation Commission's last meeting. I'm not entirely sure. It was a part of their meeting packet, so that would be another reference point to look for it.
Thanks. I just wanted to ask a couple of questions because, you know, I'm sure we have a lot of people who are anxious, especially since tonight was such a nice evening, to get out and do some other social distance acceptable recreation. And I know they're greatly looking forward to this new asset in town. So thank you for the report, Steve.
Yeah, no problem. And I just would add to that it was mentioned at the Conservation Commission meeting that this region was kind of seen as a little bit of a desert zone in terms of having accessible mountain bike trails. You know, most people had to travel at least, you know, twenty miles to the nearest mountain bike trail. So this kind of creates a good hub for people in neighboring communities.
Cool. I know my kids looking forward to it. All right. Cassandra?
I was just going to clarify something. With the mountain bike trails, are they, with Steve, maybe he knows this, are these true mountain bike trails? Like, they're, I mean, you can hike on mountain bike trails, but if they're single-track, they're really meant for bikes. Like, I'm a pretty avid mountbiker and go out in the woods for hours, and there's nowhere else to trails in my life. It's like rock jumps and stuff. I think it's that kind of trail, right, Steve?
Yeah, there will be some runs, there will be some, like, you know, zigzags, or it'll be like the routes that would be seen as a traditional mountain bike trail. And I think that's how it's going to be generally advertised. But I think just as a general, the Conservation Commission's policy and mission is to make it accessible to most uses. You know, obviously not electric bikes or motorized vehicles. I don't believe there'll be equestrian riding allowed. So it's generally the least damage possible. And obviously, if you do mountain biking a lot, the conversations I had with John and the commission, they talked about, you know, certain seasons, seasonality, that you wouldn't bike when it's really wet or, you know, weather conditions would, you know, severely degrade the blazed trails.
Right. Yeah, and most mountbikers are pretty conservation-friendly. Yeah, I mean, we know how to clear trails. Because like at Crandles, for example, I bike in Crandles, but I bike all in between the main trails because there's all the single-track in there. So I wasn't, I was kind of envisioning it was going to be like that, but, you know, I don't know yet because I haven't walked it like you have. So Steve, let's go ride, okay?
Yeah, we'll do.
I'll race ya.
All right. Okay, let's go on to new business. Eight-one, COVID-19 update. I know we've got, I think we just have Rob on tonight, correct?
That's correct, yep. Director of Health, Rob Miller's here. And we don't have any materials in the packet, but I'm going to flip a little bit ahead so we're ready for eight point two. The only thing I was going to sort of just preamble and say that, I know between John Littell, Rob Miller, myself, we've been on several calls, and we still do our EOC calls twice a week. And we are interested now with the CT reopens initiative that's being put on through the state. We're in phase one as of May twentieth. I know the next, the phase one covers several things from inessential businesses, as well as, you know, such as retail or outdoor things as well that are starting to reopen bit by bit. Restaurants, obviously, outdoor seating. You may have seen some folks around town eating at some of the restaurants outdoors, which is permissible. And then various other things, like museums may reopen and stuff a little bit at a time with limitations on capacity still, so we're not full-blown yet. And there's, I don't know, Rob, if you wanted to sort of dive in and sort of where we're at, but I can follow up with a few things, too, at the end.
Sure, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
So as Mike was saying, we're in the throes of implementing the governor's Phase One reopen Connecticut initiative, which was codified with Executive Order seven PP, in which the governor details a number of business sectors that can open and under what criteria they can open. And it also outlines and details authorities for responding to complaints and enforcement. For our part, the Health District has set up some protocols for receiving, processing, investigating, and following up on such complaints. I can tell you that under the Executive Order seven PP, seven PP, the, there's been a division of labor for the purposes of enforcement. Under that Executive Order, local health has been designated as the authorized authority to respond to complaints for restaurants, barber shops, and hairdressers. These are the establishments we already have a relationship with and have been supporting throughout the past number of weeks. For the other sectors which are identified in the Executive Order, that's retail establishments, offices, museums, zoos, general business. I think I'm missing one other sector in there. I can't recall off the top of my head. But the balance of those pursuant to that Executive Order, the municipal chief executive officer has been authorized to designate municipal delegate to enforce those sections of the business sector rules. And the rules have been posted to the state website, the coronavirus website. And our approach, and based on my reading of the guidance in the sector rules and in my reading of the Executive Order, there are no obligations for these businesses that are opening under these sector rules to notify local or state authorities that they are open, with the exception that they're all obligated to go online to the state website and complete a self-certification form and get a badge printed and then display it prominently. Other than that, the systems seem to be set up to be, at least in part, self-regulating. Of course, of course, the self-certification piece is part of that. And then the system's also set up to be response-based. Our hope is that we won't get too many complaints to have to respond to. Of course, we know that that's not the case. We know we will get some complaints and will be obliged to follow up accordingly. It really comes down to, in terms of workload and volume, depending on how many complaints are received. So that's the enforcement piece. The part of what the Health District was involved in just prior to, in preparation for the May twentieth Phase One reopening milestone, was working with local municipal officials to help expedite proposals by restaurants to expand or enhance their outdoor seating so that we could get those local businesses open as quickly as possible. We continue to do that with Tallinn and our other local municipalities. Then I think also the only other thing that I would mention under the Executive Order and the sector rules is that on the general business side of that guidance, it's a dynamic list. The Executive Order provides the Department of Economic and Commercial Development the discretion to add businesses to that list as they deem appropriate. The list is on the website under the general business rule sectors, and it continues to grow. So it's interesting that the governor has provided some flexibility for Phase One as to which businesses can open and which can't. Moving on to some other items that I just want to update the council on, we have activated our MRC to enhance and support our contact tracing capacity. We've got six volunteers at this point in time, licensed clinicians, which have agreed, and now, along with our own staff, are undergoing training on the new contact tracing system, statewide contact tracing system called CONTACT. We hope to transition to that new system sometime in the next few weeks. Of course, we've been doing contact tracing all along with our old system, and we'll continue to do so until we can transition to the new system. The other thing I wanted to update the council on is related to statewide testing strategy. The State Health Department rolled out a testing strategy last week among all municipal chief executive officers. And in that strategy, they identified what is effectively a three-phase process. The first phase is what we're currently engaged in now, expanding capacity to do testing. The goal is to have enough capacity in the state to test as many as a hundred thousand people by the middle of the summer per week. As you move on down the phases, they start to expand the individuals eligible for testing. As it stands now, it's just symptomatic individuals and asymptomatic individuals who are in high-risk groups or who are first responders or other designated essential workers. And then, and then in the final phases towards the end of the summer, the strategy includes blanket testing for students and staff in an effort to help open up and repopulate our colleges and university campuses. And there's also a piece in there that talks briefly about doing something similar for schools. What that would look like and how the logistics would work on something like that is still uncertain and wide open for further development. So that's, those are the salient points I wanted to bring the council up on, and I'd be glad to answer any questions. And I know Mike wanted to follow up, too, with some points.
I have a couple of questions, Rob, if nobody else does. One is, do you happen to have information that we can put out? I myself am interested in this also, about plasma donations. If you have had COVID and donating plasma to help people who are really sick on it, haven't been really successful in finding that. I asked my PCP, and he said that they're not doing it. So I wasn't sure how people can go about finding out doing that, myself included. And also, in regards to your last thing, the final phases by the end of the summer, the strategy includes blanket testing for students and staff in an effort to reopen colleges, university campuses. Briefly, something about schools also. Can you talk a little bit about what is the purpose of all of this testing? From what I understand, and last information that I saw from the CDC, there's nothing that definitively says that if you've had this, you can't catch it again, or that if you have antibodies, that it will do in any way, any kind of prevention from you getting it again. So can you try to talk a little bit about the whys and the hows? We're going to be testing everybody if we don't even know if it technically matters?
Sure. So a couple of things. Let me just clarify. The testing I'm referring to is the diagnostic testing, the PCR nasal pharyngeal specimen grabbed from the nasal cavity or the Abbott Rapid test, you know, you spit into a vial.
I wish I could have done that one. The nas one is really not that fun.
Well, the Abbott Rapid test is not nearly as sensitive, the PCR. There's, you know, as much as twenty percent false negatives in the Rapid test. So the nasal pharyngeal is a much more accurate test. So we're not talking about antibody serology testing when I was referring to the statewide testing strategy. As you aptly pointed out, there's still a lot of unknowns associated with that. Positive antibody test, this tells you you are exposed. It's still unclear as to what, how much, or how long immunity is conferred from those antibodies. And so that remains to be determined through what I'm sure will be ongoing survey studies in the foreseeable future. Eventually, we will have those answers. As far as kind of the broad base testing for repopulating campus, well, you can, first and foremost, you can see that that is, those are specific components of the governor's coronavirus task force, reopen Connecticut. They had a higher education subcommittee that put a plan together on the planned calls for testing, diagnostic tests for all staff and students upon arrival at the university campuses. And the purpose of that is really twofold. One, as we all understand, this is, individuals can be asymptomatic or presymptomatic and still infectious. And so you'll have a baseline of, have a baseline understanding of who on campus should be isolated right off the bat as a preventive measure to give you, to give you at least some measure of protection and containment of those who you've identified through that initial wave of testing. Second, it's also going to be a very interesting public health survey to come, in which some data will come from testing an entire population. How many are symptomatic? I'm sorry, how many are asymptomatic? How many are presymptomatic? How long does it take for symptoms to develop? So it could actually turn into a reasonably valuable public health study. I imagine that while it's not part of the testing strategy, it is a, it is one benefit that can be derived from an effort like that. Two, it's not the only round of testing that's going to be performed, as you also aptly pointed out, Tammy, Madam Chairperson. The, all you can determine is the disposition and the status of the patient at the time the specimen was grabbed. They're either negative or positive at that time. That doesn't mean they're not going to be positive on some future date because an exposure may have occurred just days before the sample was grabbed and on a viral load, it actually developed for it to be detected when the sample was analyzed. So that's an important point. And to address that, at least to some degree, the plan calls for follow-up testing of the entire population. And then possible ongoing testing certain percentages of the population as an active surveillance component to monitoring the entire population. Now, a lot needs to be determined as to exactly how that would work. There's a lot of resources that would have to be deployed for a population like the Stor's University Campus for that to be implemented. But anyway, I hope that answered your question.
Scary stuff in there. Yeah, and then if you could just send any information that you might have about the plasma stuff, I would appreciate that.
Right, on the plasma side of things, off the top of my head... Right, on the plasma side of things, off the top of my head, I don't have anything, but we can look into that. I can tell you that that the the plasma programs appear to be run by the major health networks, like Trinity Health and Hartford Healthcare and ECHN because if plasma is used, it's used within the whatever health, you know, health network protocols exist within those major networks. And so I don't know a whole lot about that. You know, it might be worth just calling the Hartford Healthcare hotline and asking them or the ECHN hotline and asking them. They may very well have some leads if individuals are seeking to volunteer as plasma donators.
I dread giving blood. I hate it, but I tend to be a passer outer, but.
And those hotlines are on our website on the homepage.
Thank you for that information. Steve, you had a question?
Yeah, Steve Jones, a question for Rob Miller, if you're able to answer. I've been hearing from a few, like a relative and a few neighbors about getting antibody tests, the blood test. What is the where are the best places in at least the Talon area that residents can go to just for public information? And then if you're willing to, can you provide a summary of what those antibody tests do or if they're effective in terms of the test itself?
I'm sorry, what was that second question?
If you're able to answer, I was just curious about what the antibody test is actually utilized for, just kind of to give information to the public about what the antibody test is for.
Right. Right now, it's a it's a it's a tool in the clinician's toolbox to determine whether an individual has or has not been exposed to COVID-19. That's that's what that test, that's the answer. That's the that's the answer that that's a that's the question that that test answers. Were they exposed or not? That's it right now. That's and saying that to some clinicians and some and some patients is important information to have. As as for where, any any primary care physician and licensed doctor can order a test for you. So you call your doctor up and between the two of you make a decision on whether or not such a test is warranted and then they'll put an order in and you'll get it done.
Okay, so it'd be like a Quest or a CDS or some of those types?
That's correct. You know, any anybody that has those kind of phlebotomy type services.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Brenda?
Hi, thank you for coming and sharing your knowledge with us. We really appreciate it. For the benefit of the minutes and everybody who's watching, could you explain to us what MRC is and how who may be interested in can sign up to assist you?
Absolutely. So the Medical Reserve Corps is actually a national program under the under the US 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 healthcare, US US public health system. Here in the state of Connecticut, local health departments in some regions have have formally established Medical Reserve Corps units. The Eastern Highlands Health District has such a unit. The 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 units are comprised of individuals seeking to volunteer to support public health, local public health response and public health emergency response. We have currently have, I believe, almost 90 fully vetted members. We've got another 30 in various stages of the vetting process. All one needs to do to apply to become a member is go to a state website and look for the link called CT Responds. Or conversely, they can go to our website, which is www.ehhd.org. That's that's short for Eastern Highlands Health District dot org. And right there on our homepage, near the bottom, you can see the link for CT Responds or for volunteering for the MRC. And we do have a number of Talon residents that have that have joined and have have joined our MRC. We continue to recruit as many as possible. Just for those who are listening, for those of you who are listening, the kind of roles that I envision the MRC playing beyond just the contact tracing piece that we're using for now would also be if we had a second wave and our local healthcare system got burdened, then if our acute care hospitals need help, then certainly we could be deployed to a mission such as that. Another possible mission is if as the as the strategic statewide strategic plan for testing continues to grow and expand. It could be we, you know, local healthcare needs assistance with manning testing sites. And one area where I I suspect that we will we will definitely be using the MRC, all of them, is when a vaccine becomes available and we have to spearhead a mass vaccination campaign for the entire population. Probably sometime, depending on when a vaccine becomes available, you know, late winter or early spring. Who knows? It depends on when a vaccine is available. So if anybody else has any questions about that, they can always call the main office at 860-429-3325.
Thank you very much.
Madam Chair, this is Mike Rosen. Do you mind if I just finish up with a couple of things I wanted to just circle back on?
Absolutely. I just had one other quick little question and maybe we can ask this tomorrow. I was wondering, Rob, if they're giving any kind of indication of what they're watching for in the next few weeks in relation to the opening up of businesses? I know we saw an increase in positive testing, but that's, you know, it's.
Yeah, so I think the primary metric that the governor and the state health department is using is hospitalizations. The and that continues to be on a solid 30-day decline. While we did have a small blip the other day with, I think, you know, four or five more cases more than the previous day, pretty much past 30 days has been a solid decline. And I think that's really what they're going to be looking at. Probably, you know, on a county by county basis or probably more like a hospital catchment area by hospital catchment area basis. And as long as that number continues to decline, I think you'll continue to see the governor and the reopen task force further relaxing a social distancing rules with the next stated milestone date of June 20th. Of course, there are variations to that and if suddenly there's a spike or an uptick in in hospitalizations, which offsets our current trend, then they may reconsider that that milestone date. But I think as long as hospitalizations continue to decline, you'll consider you'll continue to see a relaxing of social distancing in the state. I don't know if I answered your question properly or not.
Yes, you got it. Thank you, Mike. Thank you very much, Rob. I appreciate you stopping by and giving us the information. Mike, you wanted to wrap it up?
Sure. Hi, so Mike Rosen, Town Manager. So while Director Miller is still on the phone, I just wanted to cover a few things and hopefully if I get anything wrong, he'll correct me. So I wanted to mention the Division of Labor that Rob mentioned, which was how his jurisdiction is the spas, the salons and the restaurants. On the municipal side, it's the retail stores, museums and other office buildings that we sort of have jurisdiction over, that if people see any sort of social distancing problems or lack of PPE, they would let our office know. But the the thought process is that it's the designee is not necessarily the CEO of the town. It's generally, and we heard it on the conference call with the governor, it's generally either a member of the Public Safety Department or a member of the Building Inspection Department. So I just wanted to say that I've had some discussions preliminarily with some specific folks in those two departments about how this might work with having a primary and then a backup contact between one department and the other. So I have I don't have a full and final yet about who is the primary, but like I said, I'm looking at public safety and then the building inspection units that we have. Also, to note that, you know, as of the May 20th benchmark, businesses don't have to reopen. And not everyone should report back if you do reopen. The governor is still saying that if you can safely work from home, you're encouraged to do so. I believe the number is 50% at the moment of capacity. So your occupancy shouldn't be more than 50% of your workforce or if you're a restaurant, 50% of your occupancy. So that's things that people will be on the lookout for. And if they should want to file a complaint, there's a there's a mechanism for them to do so. I know that you can call 211 and there's also a website you can go to to fill out a complaint form if you see something that doesn't seem right to you. In terms of other things around town, I know we've received a lot of specific one-off emails. Council received some, Town Manager received some, my office. People have said, well, let's reopen playgrounds, let's reopen gyms, let's reopen the library, tab a tennis courts. So just the tennis courts are reopened. We were able to get six of the town's nine tennis courts. It's the and it's the bookend courts, not the middle courts that have reopened around town. So you are allowed to have doubles matches for people with a empty court in the middle and then another four person on the left and right side. So tennis courts are reopened. Continue to say that playgrounds remain closed and that's based on the guidance that not only Director Miller, but it's coming from the state as well, that playgrounds are hotbeds of interaction and germ sharing. So they they are not opening at this time as of best practices in the industry. And gyms, we got an email about that. They're part of the June 20th phase and we've continued to let the people know that have asked us about gyms that we're following the state guidance on that and we're recommending heavily that they do not open sooner because they might be in violation of social distancing problems. And the library, I believe, is part of the June 20th phase as well, that the governor has said libraries should in some way, shape or form reopen June 20th. And I've I have to speak with our library director about what that's going to look like. I know they've installed some distancing measures in the library, plexiglass, things like that. They're doing the curbside pickup right now. But I guess June 20th, we may see some return of the public to the library. That's yet to be fleshed out. And then camps, summer camps, we are close to a decision on that. I spoke with Director Watt this afternoon, Bruce Watt, about camps. I believe that we're leaning towards not having summer camps this summer, but having something in lieu of it that we're working on at the moment, that it's going to have a virtual component to it, online class type of a thing. But it's not been fully fleshed out yet. We're speaking about it and I know we're working closely with Rob's office on it to give us guidance on how this could work. But I do believe we'll probably very shortly have a press release go out that summer camps are likely to be canceled for this for this summer due to COVID. And that's that's what I have in terms of wrapping it up from the from the municipal side.
Thank you, Mike. I appreciate that. And thank you again, Rob, for coming.
My pleasure.
If you want to jump off, you're probably good for that. Actually, Brenda has her hand up.
For Mike Rosen rather than Rob, so.
Okay, well, Rob?
You can stay, Rob, if you want.
I'll stand for a minute, just in case it's a COVID-related question.
Well, it is about the updates. This is Brenda Felucy. Mike Rosen, are we going to be creating an opening committee? I know that idea had been batted around a few times, but you know, some sort of committee that would help support our local businesses and small businesses, answer questions or give them some of the support they need to recover?
Hi, it's Mike. So the the answer is is that I don't have I don't have a full-fledged plan for that. I can say that every community that I've spoken to through CROG is doing it a little bit differently. Some communities do have full-fledged reopening committees or recovery committees. Some are deferring to their EDCs or whatever they're called in that particular municipality to take up that torch. I don't know that we've actually tasked the EDC. I can say we haven't tasked the EDC with doing that yet in our community, but it's an idea that potentially they could do that if they would like to. There's also some cross-section of it with staff that you might have some in some communities, it's going to it's a staff-driven thing. I believe in Vernon it is, so that they're doing it in-house internally. I do, yeah, so as you can see, it's a little bit all over the place. There's no one uniform way to attack it. I also know some communities are actually not doing it at all because they see that it's either more of a regional thing or it just doesn't make sense for their particular community to do it. So we are all over the map on this and I don't know that it's necessarily, it might be the council's decision to decide which way to go with it. But I don't have, I mean, again, we could we could ask the EDC to do it or any other, you know, way that I just said.
We have an EDC meeting on June 3rd, so we can bring it up then.
As the representative from the Tourism Central Region tourism, I'm going to strongly suggest we consider that and get moving on it because with only a month to to get up to speed, you know, for the June 20th, quicker the better. For the places like town hall and municipal buildings, I know there's certification for businesses and we all assume our doctors' offices are going to be following proper procedure. But is there anything, are residents just assuming the best of their government or is there any certification process once we open or any signage that we should be doing once we open to help alleviate any worries about the residents entering and to give them any direction about how the town hall, once we get there, is going to be operating?
Well, I'll ask since Rob stayed on. I mean, we've talked about this a little bit. We we don't, well, what's what do you think about that?
So there's no process for the municipal buildings unnecessarily like there is for those sectors of business that have been identified in the reopen Connecticut Phase One plan. Excuse me.
Question?
Sorry. That said, there's nothing to keep the the town hall building from going through the self-certification processes and having a badge printed out and prominently displayed and may perhaps as a perhaps in as a way to demonstrate, you know, model behavior for offices and service providers in the community.
Thank you.
Thanks, Rob. Yeah, I can tell you, Brenda, that around town hall, even though we still are not open to the public at this time, there's been some discussions about what's what it might look like when that changes. And specifically, I know there are certain departments that are more heavily trafficked with residents and are concerned about, you know, PPE and having a barrier when they're speaking to somebody from outside, you know, our bubble. So we have put plexiglass around town hall and various offices. You'll see it in the Town Manager's Office as well as all around town and to Town Hall, I mean. And there's, we have hand sanitizer. The one thing that we don't have that many businesses have employed at this point in terms of a strategy is sort of a one-way entrance and a one-way exit. We do not have that because town hall has so many entrances and exits. It's something that I've mentioned a few times that maybe we do just have one single point of entry and one single exit, but there might be ADA issues with that because our where our spots are are on the other side of all the way down by the library entrance. And some people that might be going to the finance department are going to have to travel all the way through the building to to do that, to to, you know, and not to say it's not doable, but it's just a longer trek than if you just park right outside the manager's office or right outside the, you know, Bev's office down in Human Services. So there's there's discussions about this. You know, if it's something that we we think that it's we have to do it and just bite the bullet and then create a single point of entrance and a single exit, we'll do it. I know other businesses, restaurants are doing that, probably other offices are doing that too. But but I don't know that we are thinking of opening probably, well, I don't have a date in mind, but I think because the libraries are being looking at for June 20th, I think maybe town hall should be looking at June 20th as well.
So if I may just add, Michael, the, you know, we've been working with a few towns and town halls on this matter, not the health district. And and like the reopen committees, you know, towns have various. And, and like the reopen committees, you know, towns have various approaches to this issue. While they are considered an essential service and, and therefore um was never um prohibited from closing uh under the essential services uh um criteria of the executive orders. Nonetheless, uh many town halls, um understanding they needed to protect, uh protect their staff and, and protect the public. Uh close the doors to the public until they could get a clear handle on an appropriate approach uh for reopening. Um and as, and then accordingly, there's no, there's no obligation or deadline or timeframe necessarily that the, that the towns need to stick to in terms of uh when or how they reopen. It's at their discretion. That said, there are two uh, two um sources of information that towns have at their disposal when they're developing their reopen plans. One is the uh Safe Workplace for Essential Businesses on the EDC website. It has uh um the criteria under which town halls uh who remain open or are open to staff uh would continue to operate. Uh those, that criteria is still in full force and effect. And then also as additional guidance, so the sector rules for offices. Uh and the two of them together, I think, provide a good complement on sources of information on that towns can uh look to when they develop their reopening plans. And that's a piece I wanted to add.
And it's worth noting too that anybody that might have in-person business that needs to be addressed. We've been able to make accommodations. We've, uh, there's a picnic table outside the Town Hall that I know that a few staff members have met residents wearing PPE um to meet them face-to-face out there. Uh and so we're able to do that. We're able to do that and also obviously any other sort of in-person things like paying taxes or um going, getting a license or something like that. We think there are online alternatives. So we, we're, we're able to, by appointment, you're able to get ahold of us. Obviously, we're still answering the phones and emails and we're still operating at a reduced staff in person, but folks are working at home. So we're, we're adhering to a lot of the right guidance uh on this. And if there is the drive that we do need to uh open the doors again, then um we can do that as well. But I, everyone's operating very well. They're functioning well from the way that it's working right now.
Yeah, and it is important, if I may add, for um the town to um, um, you know, um carefully develop a plan, um one that they're comfortable with before they open, say, before they open safely, to assure that they open safely.
And my last question is um for the Senior Center. Um, you know, is seniors are, many times can be very um, much segregated from the community. Very much loners and they rely on the Senior Center for quite a many things, uh quite a few things. Health screenings was one thing that was important. I know we had been offering blood pressure checks and um maybe a few other things. Um are we ensuring that um seniors that were relying on these services are going to other places? And at what, um when do we start considering opening up some things in the Senior Center to help um, you know, alleviate some of the social issues that our seniors are facing?
Um so I would have to defer the, to, to, to Human Services Director Bev Bellaty on some of the specifics on the programs. I know that I have an email from Bev I'm looking at that they're looking, that the Senior Center Director and the Human Services Director are looking for guidance as to opening the Senior Center, uh which would likely come from the Health Department. There hasn't been a universal model yet from the other senior centers in the area. I can tell you, there's a lot of concern over opening the Senior Center due to folks that might not um socially distance or that how, you know, how do you prepare meals or, or do you only have one person per table, things like that? I mean, we're, they're, they're, they're figuring it out. If you have people that wanna play cards or if they wanna play a game of billiards, it's gonna be difficult to socially distance if you're sharing objects like cards or the pool cue. So there's, there's consideration going into this. Maybe that's not what you roll out on day one. Maybe you just have people that you, you, you were able to have them interact safely across, you know, from sitting in around things. But um I, I just uh, they're, they're hesitant to jump back with two feet into this. Understanding that that's the most vulnerable population and even that some of our staff are part of that vulnerable population in, in that department. So um there's just a lot of concern, to be honest.
I know that's pretty much what I expected as an answer. I was just more concerned uh like the tax help and the um, the health screenings that were going on. Those were mostly my concerns there. Thank you.
Sure, we can forward those to Bev. Yep.
Rob, I had mentioned, um, I have, I was talking to Fran at the Senior Center. And I had, I was wondering if there's some kind of program that we could put in place um to kind of establish different groups. So the groups of seniors who live alone. They, if they were to leave their home and go to the Senior Center and only have other groups of seniors that live alone that are practicing social distancing and then a separate group of the seniors who live with their children or grandchildren, you know, because they have more exposure risk because there's more people in the house. Um, you know, just trying to find a way to get them back into some sort of setting at the Senior Center for um socialization and mental health purposes. Is something like that being looked at or considered?
Well, I mean, that's an interesting idea. What you're, what you're describing is what we would call co- cohorting.
Yep.
Groups, um creating the uh distinct cohorted uh groups. And, and in effect, creating kind of new family units. Um, um, and uh, and I, you know, off the top of my head, you know, theoretically, something like that may work. Um, but uh, um, I, I'd be less. I'm not sure you could really develop criteria and a manner to kind of manage it properly. You know, based on kind of risk categories associated with, you know, who they live with and how they live. Uh it's hard to make those judgments on individuals. Uh you just don't know for sure um, um, what there be, what individuals' behaviors are. And if you're, uh, you know, you're making assumptions about their behavior uh so that they can gather with other people, then I think that's a bit of a risk. Um, I think though, you know, as it stands now, you know, seniors can come together in groups of four or five uh under the current, uh, under the current executive order. My concern is um, as um, as an event or a program sponsored, managed by the town. Um, and understanding that this is the, the population at greatest risk for infection. You know, there's a, there's a lot of, there's a number of things that could go wrong there. Um, now, if, if somehow you wanna facilitate, you know, informally, you know, opportunities for small groups of seniors to come together, you know, maybe. I mean, this is a real challenging situation, to tell you the truth, Cami. Um, the, you know, these, the, our seniors are such great risk. Uh seventy-eight percent of uh COVID deaths in this. Um, and I, I think, I, I can't recall whether it's a national figure or a state figure. But seventy-eight percent of the deaths of COVID are, are from our senior population. Uh more specifically, I believe, from our either assisted facilities or nursing homes. Um, and so it's just, it's, some of those numbers are really big. And unfortunately, I think until there's a vaccine available uh for, for, uh, for our seniors, this is gonna be an ongoing challenge for the months to come. And, you know, with that being said, you know, any ideas, out-of-the-box thinking, by all means. Uh, you know, if there's some way we could figure out for seniors that they can cohort in a responsible way and create their own little family units. Um, and be, and, and behave in a manner that doesn't put anybody else at risk and that they understand the risks going into it. Maybe, but, you know, I mean, we'd have to think about that very critically.
Thank you. Um, Steve?
All right, Steve Jones. Um, so just four things. I'm gonna try, try and move really quickly. I just wanted to first thank um Town Manager Rosen for the update in the packet uh regarding registering to vote during COVID nineteen as well as the uh voting by absentee ballot, at least in this instance for the August eleventh primary due to COVID nineteen. Uh those can be referenced on page fifty-seven and fifty-eight for members of the public that are interested in reading more about it. Uh my next point was going to be just a quick question from Mike regarding um how employees are doing in terms of the rotational work-from-home status and how that is uh ongoing and working for everybody.
Um, sure. I think that it seems to be still a, a popular and beneficial program. I think people appreciate the opportunity to properly socially distance and also be productive. Um, and to, if I could speak frankly, they, they, they appreciate that they're earning their paychecks and uh that, that the council was good about um not furloughing or laying off. So we, you know, I think that they're doing good work from home. Um, I know that I do sign off on a weekly basis on each employee who's utilizing the program, what they're anticipating to be working while they're home. Um, it's not a cookie cutter. Uh, everybody's doing something different. And some people are working one day on, one day off, one day on, one day off. Some people are doing one week at a time, then the next week they're off at home. But um he, I think it's going well. Um, it, you know, we do, it's, sometimes it's funny because the, I'm, I'm, myself and, and Mike Wilkinson are in the office every day as well as many of the department heads. So, you know, you were like, oh, I wonder what week it is. Oh, is it Lynn's week or Kim's week? That's how we tell time now. So it's kind of interesting how things have shifted. But um, but yeah, it's uh, it's going well, Steve. And I would, I, I'm comfortable continuing this program until it's safe to have everybody back at a hundred percent.
Yeah, and I would just say anecdotally, I know it's different between private and public sector, but I was on a conference call with my employer today, our office. Um, you know, we have multiple offices, but the one located uh in this state, um they just sent out a notice that we will be um not required, but encouraged to work from home through the end of September so that they can continue kind of that full implementation process or at least align the social distancing. So that might be something to keep in mind and perhaps see what other towns are doing in terms of if they're doing work from home, what their timeline is to extend that out. It might be good to look into that. The second question I had was for um potentially Lisa. It doesn't need to be answered now. But I was curious for the status of our emergency declaration fund in terms of its balance. And um, I know, I don't wanna go into the expenditures, because I know the FEMA reimbursement process is very laboring and difficult. But just as a curiosity as how we're doing with our, our balance at this point.
I definitely will have to get back to you with, with the number. I think we had spent, last time I looked, around forty-two thousand. But I, that, I don't wanna be held with that number. I'll have to get back to you.
Yeah, no, I, I figured that would be a very specific question, so there's no rush to get that. Um, and then the last question I had, there was sort of a discussion, I think, either in the joint meeting or a prior Board of Education meeting about a piece of equipment they were considering allocating that was basically like a sanitizer mister. And I was curious if that would be a viable uh use of the Emergency Declaration Fund. Um, once we kind of go into that phase reopening of the library or other town offices or even the emergency, um, you know, Emergency Operations Center to have that as a item.
Um, so this is Mike, the Town Manager. Um, I see no reason why that wouldn't be eligible for that. Um, it's certainly not an anticipated expense. The declaration fund was meant for things that were not anticipated um and are due to emergency nature. And would be great if they're one-time things that we're buying out of it. Because in theory, we, we don't know what's gonna go back into replace that account. So I think that that's something that is FEMA eligible. Anything that's cleaning or um sanitizing has been, I think, green-lighted on that. So um, so yes, I think that would be probably something that we could purchase out of the fund, assuming that, like, sounds like there's um, there's enough of a balance that we could purchase a few of those pieces of equipment.
And I guess if it's okay if I kind of follow that up a little bit with Rob, if he's able to answer that. Um, have you heard of the efficacy of those um sanitizer, either handheld or backpack, um, devices for cleaning rooms or public spaces, like libraries?
So um, so there is a position by the CDC on the, on the devices that are kind of fogger, that, that are foggers uh that uh um may attempt to um disperse or disinfect it in that manner. And, and the CDC's general guide in front of that is that foggers aren't necessarily effective and aren't necessarily recommended. Conversely, there's another uh technology called electrostatic um misters. Um, and I don't know as much about them. Anecdotally, um, my, my understanding is that, that, that they may be more effective than the foggers. But uh off the top of my head, I, I, I don't know much more than that.
Okay, no worries. I just figured if we're exploring those options, it would be good for the town to consider whether or not we just, I mean, just anecdotally, if we're gonna have one of those or if we just stockpile on individual sanitizer wipes and have cleaning staff off-hours, kind of going through each division of the buildings to kind of physically wipe down surfaces and, you know, dealing with the trash and other things and trying to kind of have a cost-benefit analysis to that. Just, just my thoughts, obviously.
I'm aware that industry, uh, industries such as airlines and other large commercial corporations have been using the electrostatic foggers. I can only presume, I'm sorry, electrostatic misters. I could presume that their occupational health people have evaluated them accordingly. Um, but uh, but so it, so that may be something worth exploring uh and doing some research on if that's the direction the town wants to go.
Uh, and, and uh, Steve, this is Mike again. I just wanted to follow up. So the dec- while those sprays, those sprayer units may be eligible to be used out of the declaration account to fund it. Um, I do believe, and I know Lisa's on the call, correct me if I'm wrong. I believe the fiscal year nineteen-twenty reimbursement um period uh has come to a close to, to for FEMA. Um, they wanted us to, to project out for the June month about um what expenses we anticipated through June. Um, is that right, Lisa, that we had to submit that paperwork? No.
No, that, that was for, um, there's several different programs going on right now. The state is considering, um, rather than us using FEMA money to possibly provide a, uh, like a grant through OPM. That, they're still working on all of that right now. And um, so what Mike is referring to is that's the one that they closed everything out, that you couldn't add anything to it. I did try to add those devices. And what they told me is that there's going to be another program explicitly just for the schools. And things like that will probably be eligible under that program. But everything is kind of up in the air right now. Um, eventually, we're not, we're not gonna give up our FEMA grant application. Um, but if this comes through, then we may not have to go after FEMA money. Um, because this may be at a hundred percent reimbursement versus a seventy-five percent.
Yeah, Mike, they talked about this at the last governor's call. They said that uh they had received enough money in the CARES Act that they felt like they would be able to um refund us, the towns, for a hundred percent rather than going after the FEMA seventy-five percent. I'm assuming that's what they wanted, uh, that what Lisa, what you were saying, the, that they said, mentioned there was a two-week submission deadline or something like that.
Right, and we, we did.
We, yeah.
Yes, and then we would, so Lisa, if that's the case, we'd keep the FEMA application over, but we wouldn't use it because we'd be getting a hundred percent from the CARES Act, that, the money that came to the state from that.
Right, but we're, we're not giving up on, you know, we're still doing all the paperwork for the FEMA, keeping all that in place.
Double tap.
Well, we won't double tap, but.
No, I mean, keep it open, just in case.
Right, and then we can always cancel it.
Right.
I do have a, a number so far, if, if you want it now, Stephen. I just looked it up regarding what we spent and it was um between expended and accumulated so far is thirty-eight thousand, six hundred and ten dollars.
Okay, thank you.
All right, um, seeing the other hands, I think we're good to go on to eight point two. And Rob, take it while you can get it, hop off, go sit back, have a drink, relax.
Have a good night, everybody.
Thank you.
Thanks, Rob.
Thank you, Rob. Have a good night.
All right, eight point two, submission of amended Town Manager's recommended full-year twenty-twenty-one budget and consideration of a resolution to be set, to set the public hearing thereon for June second, twenty-twenty. So this is to set the public hearing on June second where Mike will go over. where Mike will go over his full recommendation with public comment, and of course, more question or comment by the Town Council.
Yes, hi, Mike Rosen, Town Manager. Just a few things on this item before we ask you to set the public hearing for June 2nd. So, first of all, this is something that we've never dealt with in terms of how late this is in the process right now. You know, March 4th, we had submitted the recommended manager's budget at that time. That was that, that blue book, and it's still posted on the town's website, the March 4th recommended budget. And then before the public hearing was held in the second or third week of June, I'm sorry, third, second or third week of March, COVID really got intense, and we had to cancel all of our in-person meetings until we got Zoom figured out and everything. So, we're back, we, we're back at this point, two months later. I, this, tonight, I'm asking you to set the public hearing for June 2nd. It's a very tight timeline from when the public hearing happens to when the council's being asked to recommend their budget for approval for a public presentation, which is only a couple of days later, on June 8th. And the, I, I also would like to say that I wouldn't be back here tonight in such good shape if not for the team of people behind me who worked on this budget with me. It's, all the department heads stepped up big time, including the superintendent. I, before I get into sort of the methodology here, I just want to kind of acknowledge a little bit. So, all the department heads stepped up, and they offered to, to me sort of what they thought that would be the best places that we can make up and, and honor the, the request for a zero percent mill rate increase year-over-year. The Town Manager's Office staff, obviously, they, they're, Mike, Lynn, Kim, they're fantastic. And they wouldn't, you know, again, this budget, big props to them. And the finance office as well. And of course, they wouldn't, without their fearless leader Lisa over there, she's really the right hand of all of this. So, again, super accolades to everybody I just mentioned. All the department heads, including planning, DPW, public safety, library, registrars, everybody offered up cuts, because everybody wanted to make the council get to their goal of the zero percent mill rate increases. And as you can imagine, a lot of the smaller departments don't have a lot to cut from. They, maybe they're just salary accounts, they don't even have expenditure accounts. So, I'm just putting it out there that this was tough to get to this zero percent budget that I'm submitting you tonight. The other thing too, is that my thought process here, so tonight's agenda item, there's some supporting materials. So, there's a budget memo that's a couple of pages long, that shows all, that details out all of the cuts on the town side. As you all know, and it bears, you know, repeating once again, that the Board of Ed, that we, we can't tell them what to do with the money. We can make suggestions, but it's, once we give them a line item, and that includes me, and then also when it goes to your budget, they can do what they want with their line items. So, I have not proposed cuts for the Board of Ed. What I have done is working with the superintendent, and we have a great relationship, is I've actually been able to work with him on how he can decrease his budget by forty-five thousand dollars by, by buying two of the capital projects that were school-related with end-of-year savings. So, he can take them out of, effectively out of next year's budget and reduce his budget by forty-five thousand. So, that's one, just one example of how we've worked together on this budget. I also amended the Town Manager's Budget Message, which is on page eleven. This supplements or replaces what's in your blue book from when I originally put together the budget message back on March 4th. I updated it with the new fund balances and obviously some language there about COVID-19 and what's changed. And revenue, we don't need revenue uncertainty and things like that. So, and also the expense drivers are listed here again. So, just to show you sort of where we're at on the town side. And the revised budget book pages, and then there's a finance, there's a memo from the finance director and fund balance analysis with two models, one with the fire truck being paid for cash and one fire truck being paid with bonded or debt. So, a lot of good materials in here to digest and be ready to think about in time for the June 2nd meeting of the public hearing, and for the public to also see all of this. And really, again, what I'm asking you tonight is to set the public hearing for June 2nd at seven PM, and that'll be the only business item that night, so we can talk for as long as everybody wants, beginning at seven PM. So, that's what I'm here to do today, to ask you to do that, please. Thank you.
I keep trying to scroll down on your screen.
Oh, so would you like me to, so here's, here's the budget memo. This is a three-page memo that shows the cuts that, on the town side. Then there's the revised budget message, this supplements your packet from March 4th. This is pretty lengthy, got some nice charts, it shows the new breakdowns of things and what, what the average assessment values would be with the new, the new mill rate. As you can see from this chart, we've, the thirty-six point oh five stays stagnant now from nineteen-twenty to twenty-twenty-one. So, we're recommending that it stays at thirty-six oh five. Some more charts, and that's my budget message. And now you've got all of these charts that are, these are the revised budget book pages. So, you see the, the new numbers there, let me just decrease this here. So, mill rate stays at thirty-six oh five. The revenues are updated, the expenditures are updated on the board and the town side. The, you know, the town government shows a one point nine one percent increase. Well, again, that's, there's expense drivers that we can't ignore. I think, did I pass them? They might be further up, here they are. So, these are the expense drivers that with or without COVID, we still have to pay these things. So, that explains the one point nine percent increase. And I don't mean to get too much into the nuts and bolts tonight, I'm just kind of showing the overview here. There's some more charts that shows the expenditure increase, which is zero point seven percent now, or about three hundred and ninety-four thousand, seven hundred and sixty-two dollars. And there's the fiscal trends. This is all available, sorry, I'm flipping through it, this is all available for inspection on the website. And yeah, that's, that's all I really wanted to do tonight, is just see if you can set the public hearing for next week.
Okay. Steve?
All right, Madam Chair, I would entertain a motion that be resolved by the Talon Town Council that it hereby sets down for a public hearing on June 2nd, 2020, the amended Town Manager's Recommended Fiscal Year 2020, 2021 Budget, approved by the Talon Town Council on August 26th, 2020.
August 26th?
No, June 2nd.
June 2nd, sorry, and May 26th, sorry, little brain, brain lapse there, my apologies.
That's okay.
Yeah.
I don't know resolution.
Going to say you skipped my birthday and everything, Steve.
I'll get your cake.
Do we have a second?
This is Brenda Felucia, I will second.
Okay, any discussion? All right, Brenda?
Hi.
Cassandra?
Hi.
Steve?
Hi.
Don? Lou?
Hi.
Kurt?
Hi.
And I am an I, so that passes unanimously. The hearing will be set for June 2nd, 2020 at seven PM via Zoom remote meeting. I highly encourage everybody to go through those pages that Mike put on here and understand exactly what's going on. And then we can have a more in-depth conversation on June 2nd. Okay, I think that gets us to eight, three then. Mike, do you want to introduce this one?
Sure, so the item is titled Discussion on Memo Received from the Agricultural Commission in Regards to Lease Revenues on 215 Hunter Road, which is also known as Campbell Peaceful Valley or Campbell Farms, I believe it's colloquially referred to. This, this is actually something that was brought to our attention by the Chair of the Talon Ag Commission, and there's a memo from Mr. Mateus that explains the idea here, which is that the lease income for the Campbell Peaceful Valley, whereas it used to be, go to the general fund, which should now be perhaps earmarked for a specific maintenance account for this property. So, the, the, the thought here was perhaps we would need to establish a new ordinance in order to do this, because it would be a new funding stream. But we checked with the town attorney, and we agreed, and he agreed that the rental payments go to the agricultural fund. There's, there's no further action actually needed from the council. The ordinance is, it, the ordinance itself, and there's a quote in the agenda item there in that, in that middle paragraph that says, when the agricultural fund was established, the proceeds from activities and initiatives of the Agriculture Commission, that, that is actually one of the initiatives that we can use the rent money to go and, and pay towards their, to their account without having to do any extra thing from the council. So, really, this item became more of an FYI than a request to establish a new fund. But because the council was, through, through Chair Mateus, was solicited for feedback on this, I figured, let's put it on an agenda, talk it through a little bit. And if, at the end of the day, there's no action item needed here, it's more just to, you know, perhaps if the council wants to just let us know that there's no issue with this course of action, it sounds like, according to our town attorney, we, we can do this. And the good news is, is that by keeping that money embedded within the property, maintenance will be able to be addressed and improved without having to come back to council mid-year, things like that. Also, you can see there's actually a significant increase proposed for the rental fee, and that's going to be good. The Chair of the Ag Commission believes that that's more market value than what the previous rent was. And assuming that we find through RFP a leasee or lesssee that wants to take over the property, they, you know, that money will go back into that account to fund further improvements to the property. Yes, really, that's all I had to say, I mean, this is the memo from Joe here.
Thank you. So, the, is there, I don't know if you would know this or not, but does the renter have any maintenance obligation in their, in their rental contract? Or is all maintenance on the town?
Not sure if I do know that, I think, I don't know if Mr. Mateus is on the line here tonight, I believe he was invited. But I don't know that answer. Does anybody else know that? No, Lisa? I'm not sure, Tammy.
All right, maybe we can find that out. Otherwise, I know we did pass that ordinance, and the, the rent going there to handle the maintenance seems logical to me. It's not being used for anything other than use of the maintenance of the property. So, Steve, you have a hand up?
Yeah, Steve Jones, like, how common is it for our commissions to have funds like this?
I would probably defer that to Lisa, having had more historical knowledge than me. This is the first of this kind that I'm aware of, that we, we don't rent a lot of parcels, I believe, in Taland. Other communities may, but Lisa, do you want to take that one?
Yeah, there, there really aren't many commissions. We have the Agriculture Commission, and then there was the, it was one other one that you guys just approved not long ago. So, it was those two commissions that, that have that. The only other thing was when they had the three hundred celebration, there was a fundraising event, and it was a short-term fund allowed for those purposes. But those are the only commission-type things I could think of.
Yeah. Yeah, no, I was just wondering, just as, as we consider establishing new commissions, and we're kind of reviewing budgets at the same time, I just wondered if it's, if it's possible to have a fund for a commission like the Commission on Disabilities to receive contributions from members of the community that would help them in their outreach and other efforts? Or is it kind of a very specific contractual process to have a fund established for a commission?
Well, it is quite involved, you certainly have to set an ordinance and make sure you have specific rules for the use of the funds and, and rules for how the funds will be received. And then you have all types of internal control things too, that you have to be concerned about. So, there's, there's a bit involved there.
Okay, thank you, I know it's somewhat unrelated to the discussion at hand, so my apologies if it's a little bit off-topic, but I definitely kind of agree that this seems pretty cut and drying, it can move forward as is.
Keep in mind though, Steve, I think that you brought up a good thing, like, when it comes to something like Sustainable CT, they have those matching grants. If we were able to, like, raise money through a crowdsourcing, crowdsourcing item for something for the Commission on Disabilities, we could apply for matching grants from Sustainable CT for some of those. We also have the Hartford Foundation for Giving too. So, there's a couple of other options out there for trying to find grant monies or, or funding monies. But I think the Ag Commission, that piece of, this piece of ordinance here was specific.
Yeah.
For the maintenance of that one property. And, and it also gave them the ability, actually, it gave them the ability to do things like the farm-to-table and have money in there and use it as a fundraising opportunity to promote agriculture.
Thank you. Yeah, no, it just seems like a very good, Steve Jones, it feels like a very good idea to at least consider. I mean, obviously, this would be up to the discretion of, of that commission in particular and other commissions, but it, what I saw, it kind of seemed like a kind of lightbulb idea that for issues that could probably provide themselves the opportunity to get public and private entities to donate funds, that it would help kind of push forward their mission while keeping the community engaged in some of those efforts.
I would think any fund, if they, any commission, if they had the opportunity to do something like that, they would have to do like the Agricultural Committee did and bring it forward to us. And then look at it and talk to Lisa and figure out how we go about establishing it and all the legalities of it and that. So, it's always an option, I think.
So, there's no, no action is needed tonight, it's just, yeah.
Okay, so, well, I hope they find a renter, a good one. That's right down the road for me, so I like to see that place, it's pretty. It's one of my favorite barns to take pictures of. All right, what do we have next on the menu?
Discussion on Exploring the Creation of a Flag Policy.
Okay, so do you want to do the summary on this one?
Sure, so, so hi, Mike Rosen, Town Manager. So, when I put together the item summary tonight, I really, this and the next item about a proclamation policy, there really wasn't much background information that I could really put in your packets tonight. What I was hoping was more for a discussion amongst the councilors about whether they would like to explore the creation of a flag policy and/or a proclamation policy. We could do them one at a, one at a time, rather than trying to put them in the same breath. But for the flag policy, I wanted to note that historically, the town has only flown the American flag and the prisoner-of-war flag. There are four locations in town that have the American flag, and there is one across the street from Town Hall that has the POW flag. I understand that council has been approached about raising and hanging other flags besides the American and the POW flag. And I figured that in this discussion tonight, we should talk a little bit about who is currently responsible for raising and lowering flags. It's Department of Public Works. And if a policy is approved, how will it be determined if a requested flag is appropriate or not? I think that's where the crux of this conversation may focus on. And will there be a length of time that flags can fly? And who will be responsible for tracking that? And then anything else you guys might want to talk about as well. So, I leave it to you to perhaps jump in on this conversation.
Okay, so this is basically just a discussion item for us. This was one that was kicked around in the last town council, but never came up on an agenda. And it's been tossed again, tossed around with this, with this town council. And we have been approached to fly other flags. So, we do not have a policy here in town. And I think in order to say yes or no to any, any organization that requests to fly a flag, we really need to talk about what the town's policy should be. And also, like, other towns, like, if there's any kind of guidance out there from other towns on what they do or don't, and how we would handle requests if we did. And I think there's a lot to kind of dig into here, so I don't think this is going to be a one-meeting thing. I think this is just to start the conversation and go from, from there. So, everybody's got their hands up pretty much. So, Steve, let's start with you.
All right, Steve Jones, Town Council. So, I may be a little bit lengthy in my comments, but I actually did want to provide sort of as guidelines for us to consider as a council. The Town of South Windsor actually recently, it was published in the Journal Inquirer, tabled their discussion to get consultation with the town attorney regarding any legal issues they could encounter. consultation with the town attorney regarding any legal issues they could encounter. So that's, I think, something that we should initially be prepared to ask of um the town manager. Um, the second item is that they had a proposed set of guidelines that I can um share the link to the council um, from their minutes. They had a list of proposed guidelines as well as a proposed application to be flown um, for flags to be flown in South Windsor, um, just to kind of do a high-level highlight on some of those items. Uh, so the request to fly a commemorative organizational flag on the town flag pole must be made using an attached application form at a regularly scheduled town council meeting. The flag, the, the flag will fly in connection with specific town or state events, town or state proclamations, or town or state recognition of an event organization. There was some discussion about whether or not it should be approved by a majority vote or be at the discretion of the town manager's office. So that would be another item I would consider that we should discuss. The approval should not be more than one commemorative organizational flag at any time and should be no more than two weeks at a time uh for the duration of the associated event. And it should be not flown more than once per year. After receipt of the Town Hall staff, prior to approval, requests can be sent to the town council or town manager. Um, no flags of commercial, religious, or political organizations would be permitted. And the flag of a group or organization shall be granted whose actions or philosophy are contrary uh to Town South Windsor policies or charter enable violence, discrimination, prejudice, or racism. So a lot of this was kind of in line with their town policies. So that probably would need to be a policy that would be in line with our town charter. And also that the flags would be flown within accordance of the US Flag Code. So that's just kind of a high-level summary of what I reviewed from both a news article as well as um the admin's document from the town of South Windsor.
Can you um, uh, after this meeting, send that information around to the whole town council?
Yes, I will. Thank you.
Very much. Um, Lou?
Uh, thank you, Lou Lubah. Uh, that um, with regard to the whole issue, I think that it's important that we do have a flag policy. Um, I think that uh, just from a legalistic standpoint, well, from a legal standpoint, that uh towns, whenever they do something like this, they have to be in compliance with their policy as well as with any state laws. I think the biggest concern that I have is that uh prevailing case law regarding the issue of flags and flying flags is that by doing that, the town would be creating a public forum. And that uh, that even if it's a full public forum or a limited public forum, that it has to be content-neutral. And that uh, that as we've seen, I mean, even earlier this week, there were issues on uh, one of the uh Facebook pages, and I believe even on the Permanent Celebration Committee uh webpage, about um, somebody flying a flag that was one of the uh, uh, it was a flag that had both the red and blue stripes in it uh, supporting uh police officers as well as fire department uh in preparation for Memorial Day as along with the United States flag. And the uh, uh, the blowback on that, on that page was, was unbelievable. Where the, uh, there was a lot of vitriol on it. Um, it was a lot of emotion. And I think that that's something where a lot of it went to allegations of how the flag was linked and what it, uh, what it was linked to. And I think that's one thing that we need to be careful about as well is that, once you create this policy, that means that the flag pole would be open to everybody. And that um, even if a, uh, if, so long as uh, as the uh, as a flag is flown, that people can voice their just approval with it, but it now becomes an open forum for public comment or a public forum, where we can't discriminate against what's being flown on there based upon uh our beliefs as far as what it stands for, what it doesn't. Once we create it, we can't restrict it. And so that's a concern that I have by creating that public forum. Um, and the other thing is that with regard to uh, the town manager's office being involved in it, I think that this is something that uh, that the discretion should be, not be with the town manager's office. That they are an apolitical office, that they're not supposed to be taking sides one way or the other. And that um, uh, and that I think that there should be, uh, that anything should be done as far as any other flags flown besides the US flag, State of Connecticut flag, or the POW flag, which are all approved by, by the State of Connecticut as well as by the US Flag Code, that um, that it rests with the town council. That the town manager's office and any other town office should not have any, uh, any involvement or discretion as far as what's being flown. That's, that's just my input on it. Thank you.
Thank you, Lou. Um, John?
Thanks, Tammy. I, I agree with Lou and my feeling on this is um, the town shouldn't be in the business of supporting certain groups. Um, I know that Steve mentioned South Windsor has developed this flag policy, but there are a lot of different flags out there. Some of them can be considered controversial. So I would be supportive of a flag policy that would only fly the flags that we currently have now. Like Lou said, the American flag, the Connecticut flag, and the POW flag. And that's where I am. So I think the, for me, the, the policy should, should be pretty simple and straightforward, and that's where I stand on it.
Thank you. Um, sorry, taking notes. Uh, Brenda?
Hi, this is Lucy. Um, I think that we have an opportunity here um for the town of Talon to um celebrate and embrace the diversity that we have in our town. Um, there are many different secular celebrations, um, many different groups um that I, I believe allowing a flag to be flown for a day for up to two weeks, um, whatever the case may be, would help um, create some um, empathy, some um acknowledgements, some respect, celebration of all the different types of um for everybody that's in our, in our town, no matter what's their clubs or organizations that they are involved with. Um, obviously, we need to follow the um procedures for, you know, what the town has. Um, Steve did a great um research for us, and I thank you for that. Um, I really liked what they had for the South Windsor policy. Um, I do want to point out that the green um flag post, I believe, is part of a military or veterans monument. Um, and therefore, um, I believe that personally, only the American flag and the POW flag should be flown there. If for some reason, the only exception I think that should happen there is if for some reason someone from like the Army or the Air Force would like to fly their flag on the birthday of each of those um organizations. I, that would be the only acceptable um string from the norm that I would see there. Um, again, because it's a military or veterans monument, forgive me for not knowing exactly which um which uh group that comes under. But um, again, I think we have an opportunity here to acknowledge um the diversity that we have in our town and to celebrate them. Um, and to recognize so many of our secular celebrations that come in here. We can be very uplifting, we can be inclusive, and we can celebrate our community. And this is the perfect opportunity to do so.
Thank you. Kurt?
Thank you, Chris Turner. Uh, so to me, it's a very simple policy. I don't think we should be flying any flags besides the American flag, State of Connecticut flag, and the POW flag. I think the town offices, town government properties are apolitical. Whether it's, even if it's not political, I don't believe it is um appropriate to be flying flags um, you know, at the whim of other people. Um, you know, seeing flags may create and cause empathy for some people, may also cause animosity in other people. And I don't think that we should put anyone in town government, especially particularly not elected officials, in that sort of situation. To me, it's very simple policy. You know, only allow the three flags that we currently have. Thank you.
Thank you, Kurt. Cassandra, do you have anything?
Um, I just, I'm conflicted and, and just because I'm just, you know, looking around at different towns. I guess New Britain raised the pride flag at Town Hall last year. So did East Hartford, so did South Windsor. And I'm not saying that it should be at Town Hall, but if we consider a flag policy to look at what other towns did in their language. And I just think there should be more discussion on this. I, I'm not, I'm not sure either way. But I do understand that there is, you know, we want to try to keep Town Hall as least, you know, neutral, like a neutral ground and not I'm not sure if I'm saying this right, but you know, I, I did agree with what South Windsor said, like no commercial or religious flags. Um, but you know, I'm just looking at what other towns are doing in Connecticut and seeing if it's something that would be appropriate for our town or not. And I'm just saying that I think there could be more discussion and learning about what other towns did and how they approached it. That's, that's all I'm getting at is um, I'm, I'm not exactly sure yet, so I'm just talking out loud. That's all we got.
Thank you. Oh, that's all right. Do you think you could do the same that I asked Steve for these other towns that you've seen? If you have um any documentation on what they did, can you please send it to the town council as a whole?
Yeah, I just, I found articles, um, especially just this recent one from um Erin Stewart of New Britain. Um, and uh, but I don't have their town's flag policy. I thought that was very interesting what Steve found. Um, those guidelines were interesting, so just to read.
If you have towns that have done it, Mike, could we perhaps, have you looked to see if there are flag policies in those towns? Or if they just decided to fly a flag?
Sure. I mean, I, I know, um, this is Mike, Town Manager, speaking. Uh, I think that if we took a look around and see what other towns have done, I know just a preliminary search um yields results from other states. And I know we'd like, obviously, we'd like to keep it to Connecticut if we can. Um, so between South Windsor and then if Cassandra, if you have other ones to point me to um that you know, then I can take a look and see uh if there's any similarities and things between. I mean, just because other towns do it a certain way, we could do it a different way. Or, or we can do no town, no policy or whatever, or anywhere in between. So um, it's up to the council to set the policy. So it's really whatever you would like to put into the document.
Yeah, I'll, I'll send over articles I found. I ju- I just was looking and trying to see what Connecticut's doing. I didn't look anywhere else, so.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Um, back to Steve.
All right, Steve Jones. Um, so yeah, just two comments. I did want to thank Brenda for her comments. I forgot to mention it in my summary for the flag policy was that um the South Windsor Council kind of had that discussion of locations for the flag to be located. So it's good to know what's designated as a monument. Um, and what, you know, what can really explicitly not be used and what can be used, as well as identifying the locations of flags. Obviously, the Town Hall one is probably most prominent. Um, the second item I would probably look at for potential research is um the State Capitol Police. Uh, they not only fly the US flag and the connect, the state flag, you know, state flag and the US flag, but they also take requests for additional flags through either, you know, non, you know, non-political or religious groups. You know, it's a lot of it is ethnic or cultural celebration and heritage. So they'll fly those flags. So that might be a policy to see what the State Capitol Police have done in terms of a guidance and um compliance.
Is there another one to add to this, Mike? So um, I don't see anybody else's hand up. I definitely would like to see more from other towns. Not to say that we have to follow other towns or not, but just to get an idea. Um, I don't think it's a, a large group of towns that have flag policies, but I, I'm curious to see what's out there. Um, I've talked to a few people and I, I do understand, I understand both sides of this. It's hard because Town Hall should not be politicized ever, you know? Um, that's what we do, and we seem to do it very well. So I don't think uh Town Hall should be the place that everybody is welcome regardless of any further things that come along. Like, everybody should be able to go there and be comfortable. So um, I don't want to see that happen. Um, but I think we do need to find a way, some way, that we can celebrate diversity or celebrate different groups and stuff like that. Um, just don't necessarily know that I think it should be Town Hall um that does that. Um, so I'm interested to see what other people have done and what policies are out there. And then I think we need to have a better discussion after we've all had a little bit of homework and a little bit of reading and figure out, A, do we want a flag policy? And B, if so, what does that flag policy look like? So, sounds like, Mike, you've got a few towns, South Windsor, East Hartford, New Britain, um East Hartford, New Britain, South Windsor, and then the State Capitol Police to um look into and get us uh whatever information that you can find. And they're going to send around the articles that they have, so we can read it and review it, and then we'll get it back on an agenda.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Tammy, I, this is Lou. I do have a.
Sorry, I saw your hand up. Go ahead, Lou.
No worries. Um, I, I would also echo Steve's request as far as referring this over to our, our town attorney uh, on the specific request of having him take a look at the issue of a, a public forum um, and the creation of a public forum and what that would mean in relation to a, a flag policy.
Okay, sounds good.
Thank you.
And Mike, if you happen to have come across any of this in any of your prior roles or anything too, do you have anything that you know of?
Yeah, um, so in the two prior municipalities I've worked for, um, town of Greenwich, Connecticut, did fly, they did fly flags. I don't know whether or not they had a policy, although certainly I can reach out to the First Selectman's Office. Um, difference there is that it was generally handled by the First Selectman. And um, obviously, that's not our former government here in Talon. Uh, the other town I worked for in Massachusetts did not have um a First Selectman. They had a, a Board of Selectmen and a Town Manager. And I know that they did not fly any flags other than the Massachusetts flag and the United States flag. Um, so I've had experience with both entities before. Um, and I agree, um, the, in Greenwich, I'm not sure what they've done since I've left back in 2015. But I remember that they flew, they flew all sorts of flags there. Um, so I'm not sure what the policy looks like. I'd have to take a look and see what they've done now, down there. Um, but I agree with the point that somebody made earlier about, in general, Town Hall should try to remain neutral as much as possible and be comfortable where everybody, anybody can visit and feel comfortable there.
Um, yeah, I just had something else I was going to say, and I totally forgot it. Um, so check in with the, the lawyer on creating a public forum. What does it mean for us legally? Um, I think that's a, a good idea. And um I can't remember what I was going to say. It was something around what you were saying, Mike, and, you know, went right out the window. I can't remember now. Uh.
I, a quick question.
Sure, Brenda, go ahead.
Sure, this is Brenda Flusse. I'd like to um challenge a little bit with people saying flying a flag for the reasons specifically like what Steve Jones had listed in other towns would make people feel uncomfortable about going to Town Hall. I mean, we're supposed to be an inclusive, non-discriminatory um, um. We have policies in place and um I, I, to find out what people mean about feeling uncomfortable because for everything that Steve had listed, I don't see anything that should be making people uncomfortable.
I don't remember everything that Steve listed. So, um, well, that's part of what we're going to be reading the backup, right? Getting all of that and looking at it.
Right, well, I believe y- you're one of the people that mentions the word uncomfortable, just like our town manager did and a few others. So.
Well, I believe personally that like, like Mike had said in that, you know, Town Hall shouldn't be politicized. You know, if, if like it came down to uh something being recognized and the town council wanted to vote on it and then whatever the majority votes is what the Town Hall has to do, then that makes Town Hall politicized. Because it's majority rule as what gets done and what doesn't get done. Whereas I think Town Hall itself and the government employees, the employees that are there, it shouldn't be politicized. That's up to, like I said, we do it better than, than most. So we're finding a way to be able to recognize things that without turning Town Hall into a majority rules is I think a, a better option. Because majority rules, it flips whenever the, the vote flips. So some people will like some things, some people won't like other things. It's a matter of Town Hall being open and available to everybody from my perspective. But um, you aimed it at more than just me. I'm not sure um if anybody wants to directly address Brenda's question, or everybody has their hands up, well, most people have their hands up again. So I don't know if it's to go around again or not.
Um, Tammy, uh, this is Lou Lubah. Uh, I'd like to address the uh, the issue. Um, Brenda, I think one of the issues is for uncomfortable is that one flag could mean something completely different to two different people. That uh we, as I mentioned before in my earlier comments, that you had the uh permanent celebration committee in, in preparation for Memorial Day. Asked people to take pictures. One of the pictures showed a person flying a uh flag that had the connotation of Blue Legs Matter in support of police officers. There's many of us that uh, there's many people, I should say, that agree with that, support that. But then you had a bunch of other people that were also saying that's a racist flag because of the connotation with uh some uh um um right-wing groups that uh, that it uh, that had flown it at one of their demonstrations. Even though that the uh, the manufacturer of the flag and even though there's a whole history behind the flag that shows that it, that it doesn't have a racist connotation, there were still people that took it that way and created, and it made them feel uncomfortable. They made that very clear uh on, on Facebook. So I think that that's where you can get that from, where if we fly a, like a flag like that, that some people may not feel comfortable, that some people may feel that that is a, has a racist connotation. Other people may be seeing it as a uh support of law enforcement. And so that's what I think it is, is where you run into that issue where one flag could have different meanings for different people. Some flags can have, be co-opted and have a different uh and have a completely, people see it as a completely different meaning for what it intended to be. And so I think that's where the issue arises to address that, that, that concern of yours specifically. Thank you.
Steve? Thank you, Lou. Sorry, Steve.
Okay, thank you, Madam Chair, Steve Jones. Um just to kind of highlight, I think some of the concerns people had, or just to reiterate from at least the town of South Windsor's policy, um the first item to note was that it was a commemorative or organizational flag. Um so and it also included that the flying would be in connection to a specific town or state event, town or state proclamation, or town or state recognition of an event or organization. And then finally, that the flag from a group or organization would be permitted as long as their actions or philosophy are, are not contrary to the town of Tallinn, or town of South Windsor, but in our case Tallinn's, policy or charter, or enable violence, discrimination, prejudice, or racism. So I think that's the three areas where there would be kind of those safeguards that it would need to come from a specific uh organization or group that would put in that request um via application. So just in terms of a process, that would be um the research, I think, and that would be kind of the safeguards from just allowing anybody to throw up whatever flag, you know, that there would need to be some guidelines and associated events in town or in, in the state that would um be in alignment with that. And that was my comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. John?
Thanks, Tammy. My point was uh we don't know what uh flags are gonna make people uncomfortable. And what I said before still stands. I don't think the town should be in the business of supporting certain groups because like Lou described, I, I saw the same thing on Facebook and I saw that flag and I knew what it meant to me, but it meant something completely different to somebody else. And that flag could be construed as being um controversial to some people and some people could have an issue with it. And then, as Mike said earlier, the whole crux of this issue is who's gonna decide what flags are appropriate, what flags are not appropriate? I'm very uncomfortable with somebody uh making that decision for us, so, so my position is the flag policy should be what it is now, the, the three flags that we've talked about.
Thank you, John. Um Kurt?
Thank you, Tammy. Um I'd also like to just point out that the flag that John and Lou were talking about was also on a private citizen's property where they're free to fly whatever they like and it still caused contrination among citizens. So uh you can just imagine the amplification of that if it's put on public property. You know, the, correct me if I'm wrong, Steve, but the uh South Windsor, or South Windsor policy, it um, did it exclude um religious groups? Is that correct? Religious, religious flags? I, maybe I misheard that.
Yeah, Steve Jones here. Um let me just find, pull that up really quick. I believe that did um, let's. Yeah, it said no flags of commercial, religious, or political organizations. Um so that would be in an instance um for a flag policy. You know, if we were to allow other organizations to consider raising their flags, they would probably have to be nonprofits um or specific, you know, non-governmental organizations that did not have a religious, commercial, or political affiliation. Um so that would be kind of another safeguard to that policy for other groups outside of what was being considered. You know, whether or not it was maybe um Breast Cancer Awareness Month that is recognized by the town or state or any other um issue that's recognized on a particular month. So that would be just another item to keep in uh, keep in mind for the town manager and for the body as a whole.
Thank you, Steve. Um you know, I just, I think it's kind of hard, it's species reasoning to, you know, consider how do you figure out what group is political, what group is not political, what group is religious and what group is not religious. Um I know for some people, the uh Breast Cancer Awareness Month, um the Susan G. Coleman Foundation is um they're, you don't like it because of certain things that they support and promote outside of breast cancer. Um so that group, even though it may seem on the surface um to be apolitical or, you know, non-religious, it, to certain people, some people, it definitely does have a connotation of um negative and political things. So I, I think that, you know, we're just gonna be getting ourselves through a wormhole and I, I don't know how you can um allow certain flags, but you know, say a religious group comes in and they want to put a flag like that, you know, it's actually not hard to say yes, we'll allow some, but no on others. So um like I said before, I'd like to keep it to the three flags we have now. I just, I think it simplifies a lot for the town, for town staff, for the town residents and future councils. Thank you.
Sorry, thank you, Kurt. Lou?
Uh thank you, Tammy. Uh Lou Lubo again. Uh and just, just to address some of the issues that Steve brought up, that um just by hearing the policy that they put forward in South Windsor uh as attorney, there's already a bunch of issues I can see with that because one, again, you're creating a public forum, but now by restricting it against any religious groups, you're now creating an establishment clause uh situation where now you're singling out religious groups that can't fly flags. Again, that's, that's something that, you know, I think that we have to tread very carefully wh- when we're looking at this policy. And I, I would like to see the um, the legal assessment on this on the public forum basis because once you start going into the issue of allowing things to be flown, uh and I'm all for inclusion. I mean, don't get me wrong, I'm all for inclusion, but uh just from a legal standpoint, that this is something where all you need is somebody to disagree with uh, with one of the issues regarding the flag that you're flying and then you're looking at a possible lawsuit on it, which now means that we're uh, that, you know, we're fighting it. And that there's, you know, law books that are replete with cases such as this where people have seen it as a violation of their, of their free speech, of the establishment clause. Uh once you create that public forum and that there's just case law on it that all over the place about people being and towns being sued because of this issue. So that's, that's one of the concerns that I have. I'm all for uh, for supporting various groups, but there's other ways that we can do it to show that we're inclusive. That does not mean that we need to fly a flag. But I'd like to see, as I said, Mike, I'd like to see uh what our town attorney, what uh Rick Conti's assessment of it would be um before we uh, before we discuss it any further.
Thank you, Lou. Um Cassandra?
I have minimized my screen. Hold on, hold on. I'm there. Okay, um so just in my search here. Sorry. I'm sorry. He was saying on my lap. That was very obnoxious. Um New Britain has a pride flag at town hall. Bristol has a pride flag at town hall. Fairfield has a, Fairfield has a pride flag at town hall. Bridgeport, New Haven, New London. Um Cheshire has a pride week they're starting this year. Litchfield has a, a pride in the hills. And um Middle Hound, Middletown is having a pride celebration this June 2020. So I'm just sending you guys all, all these articles. I, I just, I'm not saying yes or no per se. Just I was curious to see what other towns are doing and how they've approached it and if that would be appropriate for our town or not. Why does it keep duplicating? Um so um I'll send this just for people to think about and consider. It, does this work for Tallinn? I mean, these are bigger cities like Bristol, well, Fairfield, Bridgeport, New Haven. Yeah, they're a lot bigger, so. Yeah, so it may, I mean, Tallinn's small, but I just wanted, I just wanted to see what other towns are doing. And then obviously we know South Windsor and East Hartford, so you know, that's one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten towns that I could find that were articles. So um and I don't know what maybe people are doing this year. Maybe there's something coming up or not. But just to look at, see, it, does this fit for us or not? But I absolutely do see, you know, what Lou was saying. Um I saw that conversation on the permanent celebration committee meeting or uh committee page and that was very, that was uh, that was tough. That was a tough conversation. And um, um you know, this could turn out that way as well because I found other articles where people flew the flag and were, you know, there was controversy over that as well. So um this is just what I've found looking and it's just something I think we could look at a little more and find out if it, you know, there's something that can be included in Tallinn or not with what, what we uh agree on.
Thank you, Cassandra. Okay, uh with that, so we're gonna get a legal opinion. We're gonna get articles from other towns and we will have more discussion on this um to come. Mike, give everything you need from us.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Now let's get to eight point five, which is discussion on um exploring the creation of a proclamation policy. So uh Mike, go ahead. Oh, come on.
Sure, yeah, uh Mike Rosen, Town Manager. So um it's very similar to the conversation we just had a moment ago about flag policy. Uh we do not have an official proclamation policy on the books either. Um i- i- in historically, we do proclamations. And when I say proclamations, I mean the formal with the picture frame and the nice paper and everything. We do those type of proclamations for um Lions Club Citizen of the Year, Eagle Scouts, when they um get there, when they finish their um process with Eagle Scouts, uh residents who have hundredth birthdays, Fair Housing Month, which we just had back in April, and then retirements of longstanding employees. And right as COVID was breaking, we did one of those at the library. Um proclamations are um signed by the chair of the council. So council, similar to the flag policy, has been approached about whether we can do proclamations outside of these five that are on the bullet points there. And um and similarly, we'd like to have a discussion about proclamations. Um I, I asked the staff in the manager's office, um they're the ones who generate the proclamations in their current format. Uh they estimate that it's about thirty-five dollars per proclamation between the cost of the staff time as well as the paper and the frame um to do the, the papers, I'm sorry, the frame, the paper, the seal, and the employee time. And um that just generally comes out of the town manager's office budget. So um it's not a lot. We don't do a lot of proclamations to, you know, each year. Um but this could open sort of those um, that up to more proclamations uh if we alter the policy at all. Or there is no formal policy if we create a policy. So, yeah. Um so that's really, that, that's the framework for this discussion as well. Um of course, one of the other things to consider too is if um proclamations do not have to be uh an actual physical thing, they could be something that's read into the minutes, so there's no cost to that. It just goes into the minutes. And um who, if it is a physical thing, then who gets it? Like if you make a proclamation, who do you give it to, to proclaim it? So s- some little things like that we need to flesh out.
Okay, thank you, Mike, for that tee-up. So um I had asked Mike before for a list of all of the proclamations that we have done. Um and Tallinn, I think you sent that out to everybody, didn't you, Mike?
Uh no, that wasn't part of tonight's packet.
No, I know. I mean, like, I think you, Steve, you requested it too, I think, maybe. I think Steve and I both got it. Maybe.
I'll check. I don't recall getting that email, but.
Well, I had asked uh to get a list of all the proclamations and that we have proclamations going back to.
Two thousand.
Two thousand. Two thousand is what the list that you sent. And then I took it and I, I kind of like assigned categories and I sorted it. And since two thousand, we have done approximately two hundred and twenty-five proclamations of which the categories I placed them into is hundredth birthday, some kind of awareness day or month, uh business recognitions, citizens of the year, dedication ceremony, employee recognition, fair housing, um military recognition, uh my brother has one of those, um organization recognitions, um personal recognition, which were things like um commending so-and-so for doing something, for heroism, for White Oak, winning a White Oaks Coral Concert for service as a state trooper, um retirement, school-related proclamations, scout-related proclamations, lots of those. Um sports recognition, those are all the different categories that I found. So I know that we have the five that you listed, which are the ones that we standardly do them for now. But I think historically, we've done them for a few other things also, including awareness days. Um and what I was saying before regarding the flag policy and not making town hall political, this is one place that I think the town council should have control over. Um I actually have a couple of proclamations from um Eagle Scout, things that didn't happen because of COVID. And this entire proclamation, um it's a, from the town of Tallinn, a proclamation honoring so-and-so, whereas all the different things as to why. And then at the end, it says, now therefore be it resolved that I, Tammy Nuccio, Chair of the Tallinn Town Council, on behalf of the town council and the community at large, wish to honor so-and-so for this noteworthy achievement and recognize their contributions and dedication. We commend them on their significant occasion of whatever it is. Wish them luck and success of all of their future endeavors. It is dated and signed personally by me uh as Chair of the Tallinn Town Council. This is an area, as I had mentioned before, where since it is signed by the Chair and on behalf of the town council, I think we've got a little more leeway here to be able to recognize, um to set a policy, have people submit requests for some kind of proclamation. As Mike said, maybe some of them get printed out and framed, maybe some of them are proclamations that we may in a meeting, make in a meeting, we post online and everything else. And we can decide all of that, but I think this is a prime place for us to recognize what the people are asking us to recognize because this is the political piece of it. This is the proclamation policy signed by the town council. Um that's my four-one-one on this. Um I think we, we, let's have a conversation, see what everybody else says and thinks. But um I would like to see, you know, in this case, everybody kind of have the conversation on whether or not this is where we can recognize all of the different things that we were asked to do at a town council level. So I've got, Steve, your hand is up.
Alright, Steve Jones. So I think one other thing I kind of had a discussion with um Town Manager Rosen about this. But another avenue, at least in terms of establishing the proclamation policy, was I believe in certain instances, the town manager could do a personal citation on town manager, a letterhead um that may have been done, correct me if I'm wrong, um Mike, that this was done for uh or that this could be done theoretically for, say, a member of a commission, either a chair or a member that had been a longstanding member, just as like a citation of appreciation or something around those lines.
Yes, a letter of recognition, yes.
Correct, yeah.
So we did that last time. Um I had requested that. Um I had received something from somebody about Debbie Shay getting one for the Tallinn buddies. And I made the request to get a proclamation and Steve Werbner and Bill Echols said no. They didn't want to do a proclamation. They would rather do a letter of recognition. And because that is, again, that's something that the town Chair signs that has to personally sign that. They decided letter of recognition was better. And personally, I just wanted her to be recognized. So, you know, I didn't care how it happened as long as somebody sent her something saying the town of Tallinn recognizes you. Um so that's, again, another avenue is town manager's letter of recognition.
And Steve Jones here again, just to, to add on to that, that, that would might have a much lower fiscal note to the town in terms of the budget because generally that could be provided, I believe, as a, as a PDF or, you know, just submitted through email. I don't think you necessarily put that on formal letterhead unless it was requested. So right, Mike, or?
Um I think for the time, the, the times that I've done it, I don't think we framed it. Uh and, and I think we did send it uh in, in actual postal mail to the, to the person, so minimal cost.
Okay, thank you.
And you could do it like Steve, like Steve was just saying, you know, it was easy enough to make a PDF. And you could do it like Steve, like Steve was just saying, you know, it was easy enough to make a PDF of that and post it on the town Facebook page or social media or whatever, if you want to do some kind of public recognition for it.
And Steve Jones also providing it to, um, to that resident or individual in particular, so.
Yep, directly to them and then some kind of town recognition. Um, Kurt? Oh, I'm sorry, Steve, were you all done?
Yes, sorry, I'm, I'm, I'm all set, thank you.
Okay, Kurt?
Thank you, Tammy. Um, I would also kind of like to echo some of your sentiments, um, about this proclamation policy. I think this is where the political wing of our town government gets to weigh in a little heavier. And I would like, you know, specifically since town council is voting, uh, well, I think would be approving any sort of proclamations. I think this is the absolutely appropriate way to recognize, um, organizations, um, events, people, that may not fit in the typical, um, you know, a political town hall style thing. So that's just my two cents. I think this is different than the flags and, uh, I, I would like to see it stay that way. Thank you.
Um, Lou?
Thank you, Tammy, uh, Lou Lubah. Uh, I, I agree with, uh, with what Steve has put forward as well as, uh, what Kurt, Kurt's comments. Uh, I think that the, uh, letter of recognition is, is, is an easy way that we could resolve some of these matters as well. I think that as far as for the proclamations themselves, I think that, uh, at least, uh, out of the, four out of the five, uh, items that we traditionally issue them for, uh, the, uh, Citizen of the Year, Eagle Scout, a hundredth birthday and retirement of longstanding town employee, those are all achievements, those are all milestones. And I think that's something that, uh, you know, uh, has having that set is sort of like a, a standard format for proclamations, it's something that I, I wouldn't have any issue with, uh, for, for Fair Housing Month. I mean, I understand it, but I don't think that we need, need to have a, uh, regularly issued proclamation regarding that. Uh, that's something that could be noted in town council mi- minutes. Um, I think that anything beyond those, uh, those four specific achievements is something that can be, uh, then presented to the council for a, uh, for approval by the council. Uh, that's, that's just my input on it. I think that's, that's, uh, along with what Kurt was saying, that's a way that we could, uh, we could address it, we could recognize people, but that we're not stating a policy saying that these are the ones that will be approved all the time, except for these, uh, handful, those four, uh, specifically achievements that have been, as, uh, Mike has said, historically approved by the town. Thank you.
Thank you, just looking at it again. Um, John?
Thank you, Tammy. Uh, it seems like a lot of us are in agreement here. I think a, a proclamation policy gives more flexibility and will allow us to recognize a wide assortment of different groups and, and people and, and, and along with the, um, uh, letter of recognition, those two things in combination, I think, offers a lot of flexibility and supportive of establishing that type of policy.
Thank you. Brenda?
I think you, this is, uh, Brenda Flucy. I, I like having a proclamation policy for a lot of reasons. Um, we celebrate the experience of others, how they serve and grow in our community, and then therefore how our community grows as a whole. Um, many of these that are on our historical list from the town manager are, um, accomplishments that give back to the community. And there's a couple civic organizations there. I don't think that we should be singling out any civic organization. Um, I think we should, you know, if a civic organization has a top-level uh, award or ceremony, that, um, we should consider including them so long as that award shows some sort of a civic engagement. As for the fair housing, I believe that we are required by state statute to have that proclamation every year. Each year, it seems, yeah, it comes up every year, obviously, we do have to have it. Um, I would also like to see, um, proclamations or recognitions for things like, um, Fire Safety Week, EMS Week, different, um, areas of our, you know, Public Works Week, whatever comes across as, um, being a you know, part of our, um, municipal organizations that recognize the hard work of our employees for our town. Um, there's, you know, they're not eligible for things like Town Lions Club Citizen of the Year, uh, et cetera. So I think that these, um, you know, weekly proclamations or day proclamations, um, are great way to recognize the contributions of our employees. Thank you.
Thank you. So you're just thinking recognition of employees as a proclamation? Because I think Mike specifically.
No, the group, you know, like Fire Safety Week and, uh, Public Works Week. We're recognizing the employees of our, um, public safety, public works, um, our s- schools when we have Teachers Week, the nurses when we have a school nurse week. Um, there's different weeks that recognize municipal employees and, and contributions of municipal organizations. And I think it's important that we, um, step up and, and make sure that those are accounted for.
Thank you, I was wanting to clarify that because I thought you had said just employees. Like, we're going to be doing these all the time, we're just going to throw them out there. Cassandra?
Um, agree with Kurt and Lou and Steve about the policy. One thing I was just noticing on this list, and it's similar to what Brenda had said, is just other civic-minded groups like, Girl Scouts has a gold award that's the same level as Boy Scout, Eagle Scouts. So just, you know, there's one girl, we have one, um, girl I've been working with and already had, has met with Michael Rosen, Town Manager, um, Emma Trombley and her work on trying to create a dog park for Talon. And that's her gold award. So if potentially added to this list or part of the policy is recognizing civic groups that contribute to the town, like a Girl Scout Gold Award, there's been some pretty significant achievements our Girl Scouts have done at that level. So maybe it's just something to consider to that list.
They used to get them. Um, they are on the list of the old ones. Back in twenty thirteen, there were quite a few girls that got their Silver Court Honor. And a couple Girl Scout Organization ones, but for some reason, I don't know if people stopped submitting them or not, but there are some definitely on the list of, of the olden days there, that that was that old ago, but.
Tammy, this is Mike, do you mind if I just say something quickly?
Absolutely.
So, uh, Mike Rosen, Town Manager. So, um, I wanted to actually just address that along the lines of, you know, things have changed over time. There's no, as far as I can tell, there's no rhyme or reason as to why some years dating back to two thousand, uh, like you said, we have had over two hundred proclamations over the course of the last twenty years, which doesn't really sound like a lot for twenty years worth, but, um, there, there's really no stipulations that I found why proclamations have either slowed down or sped up or in terms of how they were issued. Uh, perhaps they were council-dependent or town manager-dependent, I don't know. Or like you said, maybe the requests stopped coming in, except for the five that are on the list as of today. That, those five bullets are the ones that were as of the last couple of years. But if you do look further back, historically, there were other things that were on the list as well. These are the five that the staff in the manager's office have told me that are sort of the routine ones. So, um, that's, that's why we sort of started the conversation from there. But I do agree that, you know, we should open it up to the, all the civic organizations, uh, not just to the ones that are specifically named. Those are the ones that obviously have had recent submissions and it kind of like expectation of submission on a yearly basis. Also, it's beneficial that on the council agendas, we have, uh, item four. Every two weeks, we have proclamations on the agenda. More often than not, we have the word none next to it because we don't usually do a lot of proclamations. But this could be the category on the agenda where the council, um, talks about an upcoming request for a proclamation and says what in, you know, takes a vote on it, whether or not they'd like to have that proclamation added to the next agenda or something like that as part of the policy. Um, obviously, we would need to establish the, the mechanism by which we would approve, um, requests for proclamation. And probably somewhere in that policy as well, talk about the offshoot approach of the letter of recognition. I, I, I would see that similar to the conversation we talked a little bit earlier about flags. Letters of recognition probably should be for things that are not political and that are neutral and that are just sort of, um, uh, indications of things that have happened, whether they're milestones or if they're, like Brenda had said, specific weeks for departments or, um, you know, appreciation of teachers, appreciation of nurses. Th- these are the things that are like matter of fact. And certainly we can crank those out of my office, no problem. But when it comes to things that may, you, you may need a council vote on, I would defer to the proclamation policy to cover that. Uh, that would just be my two cents on that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. And looking back, we used to do, we had some, like, we had a yearly one for White Cane Safety Day, National, uh, Mammography Day, um, National Breast Cancer Awareness, uh, National Family Literacy Day, GI Nurses Day, um, Child Identification Awareness, uh, America Recycles Day. Um, we have a Janus Pocket Day, um, Leukemia, Lymphomema, Melanoma Awareness Month. Like, we did them for, uh, we actually, nine nineteen twenty thirteen, declaring September nineteenth, twenty thirteen, No Texting While Driving Day. This was a proclamation, so, um, I think we probably had more leeway in the past. I do like the idea of maybe not necessarily, like, I think the Eagle Scouts is a pretty standard one that we get that I can't see anybody saying no to, but I, I do like the idea of taking, of making it, um, more civic-minded groups, but I don't, I don't know if we would want to, maybe we just put like, uh, Boy or Girl Scout proclamations there instead of just Eagle Scouts. Because saying all civil organizations kind of opens that up to, I don't know what that would be narrowed down by, but if you put Boy and Girl Scouts recognition, that would handle that piece of it. The Fair Housing Month, I, I believe I get Brenda said, that's something that we have to certify every year. So it's a, it is a standard one. I know I just signed it, but I don't, I don't think that one gets framed and everything, because who does it go to? Right, Mike? I don't know that it goes to anybody.
Um, I don't believe, well, at least having this April as experience, I don't believe it was framed. I think it was just signed and scanned.
Yeah, I just signed it, I don't think it like goes anywhere. And that's another thing to look at too, you know, when somebody requests these, does it go to the person who's requesting it? Does it go to a group? I think we can look at all of that. But I, I like the idea of having a standard set, like, you know, these ones are given, you know, the Citizen of the Year, a hundredth birthday, fair housing, stuff like that. And then, um, having some kind of policy that we utilize the agenda spot that's there, where anybody that writes in with requesting a proclamation, we can discuss it and then get it on the, like, next agenda or whatever agenda is appropriate for it to be on for the actual proclamation. And because it is a, by the town council, you know, on behalf of the town council and the community at large, I think, um, you know, this is the place where, again, like you had said, Mike, this can be, anybody can write in and request it and then we vote on it. And if the town council is in favor of it and we do a proclamation and I sign it, and I can know the Chair, whoever's sitting here in this spot, signs it and, um, puts it out and we can discuss at that point whether certain things get, like, the Eagle Scouts, those get framed. They're nice, they're a piece, like you said, they're, they're an accomplishment. They are, um, something that is a milestone. Uh, I think maybe we would have to sit down and think about which ones would get signed, framed and all that other good stuff, but Brenda, you have your hand up?
Yeah, I just wanted to point out, it's not Boy Scouts anymore, it's just Scouts. Or the, I forgot the name of it, they, um, Scouts of America.
It's Scouting USA.
Thank you, Scouting USA. I knew someone would remember.
Okay, thank you. So, I guess what do we need for next steps on this one, Mike?
Um, so I guess, I'm just trying to think, the, uh, we, we have some good conversation tonight. I guess we can try to put them together, some of the suggestions into, I, I, I took basically some bullet points here. So, uh, we got to develop a standard set for automatic approval. Uh, it sounds like it can't just be the five on the list there, we need to open it up a little bit more. So we would need some guidance about what the standard set includes. Then we would need to talk about how do we utilize the agenda spot to discuss future proclamations. I think in a way, what we're really talking about is having, um, uh, an application form that somebody that wants a proclamation would fill it out and then say when they need it by. And that basically we would need to say, you need to give us this form probably a month ahead of time because it needs to go to a council meeting for discussion and then a further council meeting for issuance. So we probably need to put a thirty-day lead time on there and then talk about which ones get framed. So I do think we need more guidance and from you as the, as the council to tell us, you know, as staff, what you would like to see from this. Uh, doesn't have to be tonight, maybe we put it on another agenda and talk about it a little bit further. Unless people want to send me individually their thoughts and I can try to, um, uh, meld them together into a singular document. I could do that too.
Um, that works. My only concern is, you know, and this is, this is me, we can all discuss it however you want to look at it, is I would really like to get a proclamation for, um, for Pride Month. So that gets us to, um, our next meeting is the beginning of June. I don't know what we can do in that short timeframe to try to, um, get something for that. I don't know how we would do that because we don't have any kind of, of a policy or anything. So.
Well, nothing's, I mean, I know we kind of passed by the agenda item for proclamations already. But perhaps we could revisit that or take it up under.
Yeah, maybe we can get it on the agenda for June sixth, we can make a proclamation. I don't know, we'll, we'll have to.
Well, I, I think we would also need some language, all the whereas is. Maybe we can take that from one of the other communities that have done it and get all the whereas is, unless there's somebody that has, um, the language prepared.
Yeah, um, can we, uh, oh, see, no, this is the thing, we have a meeting. Well, we have a meeting, what, June?
Ninth.
Ninth. Do we have anything before then? No, the, not really, public hearing, we can't do it then.
Tammy, this is Lou, I, I have a suggestion, if I may.
Absolutely, Lou.
Yeah, I think that, uh, if, uh, putting together for, for that proclamation that you're proposing, putting together the language, emailing, uh, sending out to Mike and having Mike email it to us so that we can already have it pre-screened, um, and then discuss it on the next meeting, uh, at the next meeting so that it can be expeditionally, expeditiously addressed. Since there's no policy in place right now, it's not like we need to abide by a policy requirement. So, um, I think putting it out there, you know, having us review it, voting for approval on the next date or just, uh, you know, just discussing it on the next date. And then from there, uh, we could set a, uh, set the policy and move forward.
We can move an agenda item too, right?
Right.
I can say I want to move, uh, agenda item four to after new business, Mike?
Yes, yes, yes.
I, I'm thinking, if I move it, then we can have the discussion, decide if we can decide at the next meeting to establish something, then we can have a proclamation ready to go.
Yes, we would just need the language, um, that we would like to gen, we, so we, we have it all teed up that way.
Okay. All right, does anybody else have anything else regarding a proclamation? Is there anything else you want to discuss? And, um, and, and, uh, do we need, do we have any other, uh, do we have any other towns? Examples of proclamation, um, language from other areas, uh, or proclamation policies, Mike?
Um, I haven't done that research yet. I think I just, uh, preliminarily Googled it and, um, I just, I don't have any data prepared for tonight. I just, I was just more curious than anything, but I think it exists. I think I actually, when you first Google it, proclamation policy, a bunch of like Texas towns come up. If, I don't know why, but, um, but I would narrow that down to Connecticut, obviously, so.
Okay. All right, so same feedback, I would say, if you find anything that you want us to read or review beforehand, if you could send it over to us. That would be useful.
Okay.
Uh, Steve?
Uh, Steve Jones, just wanted to make note, I did, um, forward it to both, uh, you and, uh, Mike Rosen, Tammy. The email from a resident that provided, I believe, the state of Connecticut's formal proclamation, it specifically regarding to, to the Pride Month, as well as, um, they included texts below from Hartford's Pride Month proclamation. So that may be some guiding language to consider if it were applied, um, provided for a future meeting for consideration.
Yeah, I had looked at that one. My only concern with it, it was last year, it was in recognition of Stone, um, through Stonewall too. And that, so that, you know, that was last year's anniversary.
Yeah, so some of the language needs to be augmented, but, um, but certainly that would be a partial starting point, but.
So I could, I could dra, this is Mike, the town manager. I could, I could draft the, uh, Pride Day proclamation based on the, the information Steve Jones just gave me. Obviously, at the next meeting, like, uh, the Chair said that we could delay the actual proclamation discussion. that we could delay the actual proclamation discussion until after New Business on June ninth, and tailor, tailor it further if need be. And then, once you vote on it, I would mock it up, so then it's the, you know, for, for signature, basically.
Okay. I appreciate that. Thank you, Mike. All right, that gets us to eight dash six, Consideration of a Resolution to Approve a Bid Waiver for the purchase of Number Two Heating Oil from Dime Oil for the period of June first twenty twenty-one through June thirtieth twenty twenty-two for gasoline for the period of January first twenty twenty-one through December thirty-first of twenty twenty-one. There was an awful lot of twenty-twenty's in there.
Yes, it's interesting. This is Mike Rosen speaking. It's interesting that heating oil follows the fiscal year period, and gasoline follows the calendar year period, just to make things even more fun and confusing. So what we're talking about tonight is only heating oil and gasoline. We're not talking about diesel. And if you look at the dates, specifically, we're locking in a price for a future fiscal year and a future calendar year. This was, some people had suggested during the budgeting process, if oil and gas are lower prices now due to COVID-19, can we take advantage of the situation and try to lock in some favorable rates before prices go back up? The, as the summary says, Talon, in the past purchases gas, diesel, and heating oil with the Board of Ed through the Capital Region Purchasing Council. We use, currently use the vendor Dime Oil for Number Two Heating Oil, and the, that, that contract expires at the end of this calendar year. Like I said, based on the favorable prices in the market, we think that it would be good to lock in prices now. The prices as of a week ago were a dollar fifty for gas and a dollar sixty-three for heating oil. So what we're asking for tonight is the bid waiver that we request that the requirements for bidding the heating oil and the gasoline be waived in accordance with our town fiscal policy, A one-two-six-one-one-D seven. And the town council would authorize me to sign the contract with Dime Oil for heating oil and gasoline for the periods mentioned. And again, diesel is not on this list, because we're still figuring out the, the situation due to COVID with, specifically for buses for the schools that haven't been running for the last few months, and having a large outstanding amount of diesel that we didn't expect to have at this point in the fiscal year, and working with the contractor to liquidate that. And possibly, as we talked about at the last meeting, possibly using FEMA reimbursement to get back some of that money. But that's not, that's not a given or a done deal at this point. So since that's still up in the air, and we don't know what next year looks like for buses and for schools, we're not recommending locking in for diesel. We are recommending locking in for heating oil and for gas. Thank you.
So, Mike, with this, that means that we'd be locked in at the dollar fifty, right, for gas?
Well, it, it's whatever the, the, the price is at the time of locking in. When we created these agenda items, it was last week. And Mike Wilkinson, the Director of Administrative Services, these are the prices that were quoted as of last week. Dollar fifty for gas, dollar sixty-three for heating oil. That could change. I know that gas is on the rise again.
Okay, so it locks us in at the dollar fifty or the dollar sixty-three, once we do, once we do the bid waiver, right?
It'll lock us in at whatever tomorrow's market value price is. It's, it's not today's, the, the prices in your packet were when the packet was released. It's a commodity that fluctuates on an hourly basis.
Oh, I used to work for an oil company way back in the day, I know. So, all right, do, does anybody have any questions for Mike on this? Not seeing any questions? No hands or, oh, wait, let me check, sorry. Lou? Lou's hands up.
Thank you, Tammy. Just a quick question for Mike, that, now, if we did go out to bid, there's a, the possibility that one, the gas and, and fuel price would go up, as well as, would there be an issue with the, with Dime, where they may say, well, since you're going out to bid, that, that it would be a different price, uh, price range?
Uh, I don't know if Mike, if Wilkinson, if you're on the phone, or Lisa, I mean, I don't know if they could, I think it's based on the commodity rate. I don't know if it's based on competition. Do you guys agree? I'm sorry, I don't put you on the spot, guys.
I don't know if Mike- Lou, this is Mike Wilkinson with, could you clarify your question again? I'm just trying to understand.
Sure. I mean, I, I know that sometimes when you put things out to bid, that the company that you currently have the contract with, that sometimes there, there may be a little change in the, in the amount of, the amount that they're asking, because if you're gonna go out to bid, basically, they're competing now, so that, that they may see that as, as a way to sort of increase it, knowing what the, what the price is, right, is for other companies, that will most likely be bidding on it. So is there, is that, is there a danger for that? As well as a danger that, you know, as we all know, the, as Mike said, the gas price could go up, or the oil price could go up in the next two days or three days, and next thing you know, we're going from where we are now to, to, you know, something that's fifty cents or, or more higher.
So I would just say that generally, prices are, have been low, so the idea of locking in right now is good. Because you're locking in future gallons at today's price. Obviously, if we were to lock in and go with the bid, those wouldn't happen until next, we do gas in the fall, late fall, and then we do heating oil in, in the winter, so obviously, those probably, generally, the prices would be higher at that point, you would think. But obviously, you're trying to look into the future, which most people can't do, but it's a good time to lock in. The bidding, how we do the bidding prices, they, it's, it's similar. They, you, you put in your quantities, the company's bid on it, they put an adder or a certain amount that they, they would add to the gasoline whenever it's locked in, so that's kind of how they distinguish who's, who's the low bidder. And then when you lock in, whenever you, you get the bid done, like I said, it is late fall for gasoline and, and winter for, for Number Two Heating Oil. So the idea is we're taking advantage of the slowed-down economy and the, and the slowed-down use of these commodities to get a good price now for these future fiscal year and, and calendar years.
Okay, thank you. That, that addresses my, my question. Thank you.
Does anybody else have any other questions? I don't see any.
So the, Madam Chair, the draft resolution is on the screen. It's a lot. I don't know if anybody wants to read it, or just say that it recommend approval as presented, or something like that?
Steve?
Sorry about that. Let me read that up. Let's see. So I maintain a motion that be resolved that the requirements for the bidding, Number Two Heating Oil and gasoline are hereby waived in accordance with town policy A dash one-two-six-eleven-D. And the Town of Talon Council hereby authorizes Mike Rosen to execute an agreement with Dime Oil for the purchase of Number Two Heating Oil for the period of July first twenty twenty-one, June thirtieth twenty twenty-two, and gasoline for a period of January first twenty twenty-one to December thirty-first twenty twenty-one.
Just a little, but I'll second.
Any discussion? All right, all those in favor? Brenda?
Hi.
Cassandra?
Hi.
Eve?
Hi.
John?
Hi.
Lou?
Hi.
Kurt? And I'm an I, so that discussed, that passes unanimously. That gets us, no old business. Ten, report of the town manager, ten-one, registered. Go ahead, Mike.
Oh, yes. So at the last meeting, the town council requested that we reach out to the registrars and to the town clerk to talk about what the voting process looks like during COVID-19. In your packets tonight, there's a memo from the registrars, and then there's a memo from the town clerk. And I believe Sheila might be on the phone still. I saw, she was earlier. And just wanted to summarize, you know, those, those reports were put in your packets, just so you can kind of see what that's like. I do know that Sheila said that, at least as of her industry and poss, at least as of the time being, when the primaries in August, when that, when that comes to fruition, it's expected that the polls will be open that day, but we don't know for sure yet. So we're going off the assumption that polls will be open, but we're not a hundred percent on that. It's obviously, as this continues to evolve, the situation. Was there any specific questions you had on their reports that I could relate to them?
Does anybody have anything? I was good with it. I'm, I'm with you. I'm hoping that by August, we're actually going to be able to go out and vote. So that's good. And I know there's been some, some conversation around widening the allowance for for absentee ballots to include people who are still on quarantine or in their homes. So I know that's something more coming from the governor's office, but I don't have anything else. Does anybody else? No? All right, read through those papers there, and if you have any questions, let's let Mike know, so he can get back to Sheila and Mike and Lynn.
Yes, and the only, I wanted to also mention that, Brenda, I have the answer to a question you asked earlier tonight about the Visiting Nurse Service. So the visiting nurse, they, traditionally, they normally do monthly blood pressures, but obviously cannot provide that service because of COVID. There's been a change in the attitude from the health professionals over the years as to the benefits of continuing that service. Also, Bev wanted to let you know that the tax program has been on hold per AARP who runs the program.
Thank you very much for that information. I appreciate it.
Sure, you're welcome. That's all I had, Madam Chair.
Nothing else? Okay, that gets us to eleven. Steve?
Sorry, I raised my hand by accident. Sorry, go ahead.
Eleven is adoption of minutes.
Let me go back to that. Sorry, just jumping from something at a little bit of technical issue. So I need a motion to approve the minutes as laid out as eleven point one and eleven point two.
This is Brenda Felucia, second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Cassandra?
Hi.
Eve?
Hi.
John?
Hi.
Lou?
Hi.
Kurt?
Hi.
I'm in favor, so that passes unanimously. Correspondence to council, Sustainable CT Annual Report, which I believe is in the packet, right, Mike?
Yes, I'm flipping to it. Give me one moment here. Oh, wait, maybe it didn't make the packet.
It did make the packet. It's page seventy-two.
Okay, yes, thank you. That was, yep, the thing wasn't moving. So there was two, I wanted to submit this memo about the Sustainable CT Program. This is actually some, so it was the Sustainable CT Committee that wrote this to me with an update on, on how it's going. And I believe they do that, is it quarterly, at least quarterly, and, and they report annually to the full council on the progress. I'm not sure, Brenda, is there anything perhaps to speak to on this memo that you would want to point out?
Well, I'd like to thank the members of the committee. Isa McCord, Beverly Bell, Scott Lappin, Mike Wilkinson, Lisa Hancock, for all of their dedication in getting us involved in this program. Having a sustainable and resilient town is really important, especially, you know, we're taking a look at going through a pandemic right now. So there's some highlights listed there. You need two hundred required for certification. We have obtained seventy points. There are a number of points we're still working on. And, you know, it highlights some of the programs we've been already in. We do meet quarterly, as Mr. Rosen has said, that's the minimum requirements, and it is a requirement to give an annual report. We're going to continue, as you can see, we have some pending points. We're going to continue to work for, forward and try to eventually hit a requirement for certification. You know, there, there is a lot to the program. They have updated it this year, and that impacted some of the points that are available to us, but we'll continue to plug away at it. I'm excited that our town is involved in this program. The majority of towns in Connecticut are, so, you know, we're in good company. Does anybody have any questions?
I do not. Does anybody have anything?
Okay.
Okay.
The ne, the next piece is about the Hazard Mitigation Plan, which we also have some documents in your packets tonight. So just to address this, this comes from, this, there's two memos in here. One's from the Director of Planning, and the other is from the Director of Public Works, both about the same topic. As you can see from the packet, the town council adopted the Natural Hazard Mitigation Plan back in May of twenty nineteen. It covers a five-year span from twenty nineteen to twenty twenty-four. And each of the departments, between Planning, Public Works, and Public Safety, submit updates on how it's going. And so tonight, we were able to get you planning and DPWs. I don't believe public safety is part of tonight's update. So you can see what's the status of the various actions. This is sort of just for your information. If you have questions, I can bring them back to the proper department if you have questions on this.
Thank you, Mike. Does anybody have any questions for Mike on the Natural Hazard Mitigation Plan? No? Okay, that gets me to thirteen, the Chairperson's report. Upcoming, June fourth, at six-thirty, I will have my upcoming chair hours. We will be setting up a Zoom meeting soon, and I will be posting that on social media and also here. The Birch Grove meeting on the twenty, there's a Birch Grove meeting on the twenty-eighth. I want to assure everyone that the committee is working with the state to identify where project costs can be reduced to keep the project at the approved budget of forty-six million. From my perspective, it's imperative that we stay on budget and not ask the town to pay more than was already approved. There are far too many things going on right now and in the air. I look forward to the work that they're continuing to do to identify areas of savings and to meet that goal. A, there's a Board of Ed meeting tomorrow at seven-thirty. Zoom information is out there if you'd like to join. Also, as a reminder, I wanted to remind people about the Tax Deferrment Program. If your income has been impacted by income, by COVID, by twenty percent or more, and you're worried about your upcoming July first tax bill, please contact Town Hall to apply for the deferrment program. This will give you three additional months to come up with options for your tax payments. The deadline for the application is July first. On June second, Mike will be holding his public hearing on the manager's recommended budget that we had in our packet today. And then on June eighth, we have an entire meeting for the town council to be deciding and getting down to what the final budget is going to be for approval. Again, unfortunately, the governor took away the vote, so we get to have this on our shoulders to review and come up with what the project, what the budget is going to be for next year. I encourage anybody who's left on the phone to come to the meetings, send in your questions or suggestions, and be part of the conversation. May is, I know this is the end of it, but May was Mental Health Awareness Month. So if someone you know is struggling with mental health, you can reach out to one eight-hundred-two-seven-three-talk, which is eight-two-five-five, to be connected with a trained counselor, or visit be the one, the number one-two dot com, if you want to learn how to help somebody else who may be struggling. With this, I wanted to reassure people that the town council will be including in an upcoming meeting discussions around the establishment of a task force to focus on the substance use in mental health. We were calling it a commission before, but think it might be better off as a task force. It's important that we gather all of the who's and the whys and the hows that the town is working on to assist the resident of Talons. While we get things in order to bring this back up to an agenda item, I want to personally encourage people who may find themselves in need to contact their insurance companies for assistance. If you do not have mental health options with your insurance carrier, please reach out to the Human Services here at Town Hall, and they can assist you. One of the good things that has come from this virus is the increased usage of telemental, mental health options, be it a phone call, FaceTime, or via texting and emailing. There has never been more options available for obtaining assistance than there are currently. There has never been more options available for obtaining assistance than there are currently. Um, that takes care of my chairperson's report. Uh, communications and petitions from council persons.
Um, I think we kind of missed correspondence to council, the emails that came in. I'm sorry.
I forgot correspondence, uh, communications and petitions from, oh, of course.
But under number twelve, we forgot to go over the emails we received. There's not many.
Oh, all right. Well, you know, we're going to backtrack to twelve now.
Yeah. Um, we received one email in support of, uh, using absentee voting whenever possible. We received two emails about opening up playgrounds. We received one email in support of opening up salons and, uh, barber shops, and we received a case study link for, um, sidewalks and, um, preservations of, um, uh, historical sidewalks.
Thank you, Brenda.
Yes.
All right. Does anybody else have any communications or petitions from council persons? No? All right, that gets us to public.
You have two hands.
Oh, do I? How am I not, oh, am I down too low? Oh, sorry. Lou? Lou?
Yeah, no, thank you, Tammy. Um, yeah, I just want to, uh, sort of elaborate on, uh, Brenda mentioned the, uh, letters, uh, from business, local businesses and the issues that they've been having. Um, over the past week and a half, I've received probably at least a dozen phone calls from local business, uh, person, uh, people, um, who are really asking what the town, if there's anything that the town could do, and, um, really stressing how this, uh, the, uh, all the restrictions of quarantine and all the business restrictions are really adversely affecting them. Um, I explained to them, uh, that really there's nothing that we can do because of the, uh, of the executive orders, but that, uh, we're very sympathetic to their needs, uh, that we would like to, we would hope that, uh, the governor would be, uh, uh, reconsidering some of the actions and, uh, and sort of expediting opening some of these businesses in a safe way, uh, that the main complaint was that we're compliant all the way up to, uh, up to the point of two days before, uh, the, uh, the newest, uh, executive order was continued on, keeping the salons and other places closed. And, um, that it's something that, although that there is a health aspect of it, there's also a, uh, another aspect of the, uh, of the crisis that we're going through, which, uh, they feel is really being overlooked. And so, uh, I just wanted to put that out there, uh, that, uh, that this is something that is affecting a lot of different peo- a lot of people in a lot of different ways. So, thank you.
Thank you, Lou. I talked to quite a few people, too. It is, it's very disheartening, um, what's happening to the, to the businesses. Um, so I totally understand that. Um, Steve?
Right, um, Steve Jones. So I just had two, two requests, one I meant to actually ask earlier, but forgot. Um, the first would be to ask Mike if we have any policies in place in terms of the banner that I actually just have displayed behind me. That's, that currently has, um, you know, it has the Tallinn graduation banner on it, but we've had past banners for community events and other notifications, and how that may or may not align with a flag policy, or if it would be a separate policy for consideration that a banner could, could be raised by either a private group or a nonprofit group, uh, for a particular event or cause or, um, recognition. Um, and then this, sorry, go ahead, Mike.
Uh, so, so as far as I know, we only hang similar, I guess this is, yeah, it'll be, it'll be another thing on top of the other stuff that we talked about tonight. Uh, they, they hang, you know, the banners that we do, I, I, I know there's one for celebrate Tallinn, there's one for Memorial Day. Um, there, DPW hangs them. Uh, this one for the, the twenty twenty graduates, obviously, was a specific thing that we do, that we're doing just because of the COVID, uh, situation. Generally, I might, my understanding is that banners are hung nor- in the high school area, down that sort of corridor. And, um, so tha- that's not usually something we do to put a graduation banner, uh, in front of town hall. But i- it's not utilized very frequently. It's more, um, something that just happens kind of occasionally. And there is, you know, that's more significant than raising a flag. They need to, Public Works has to do some sort of special thing to get that, to get those up. So, um, I don't know if we need to go down that road, but that's, I guess that's up to the policymakers.
Yeah, no, it was just something to consider if there was a sensitivity or a mid, you know, bridging gap between having a very, you know, certain policies for the flag versus others, if that would be a location that would be considered neutral ground, that doesn't fly a US flag or a kid, you know, Connecticut state flag that could be utilized as an area for groups that, you know, maybe breast cancer awareness or other cancer awareness groups, or even the Pride Month group, or any of those organizations could utilize that as an alternative spot that would probably ride some, uh, compromise perhaps. Um, and then my second question, which I know there's a lot of uncertainty and a lot of questions regarding where we're going to get to that final number regarding Birch Grove, Mike. But I was curious if, if we did reach a point where we had to seriously consider bonding, um, would we have to, obviously, under the executive orders, we can't really hold a budget referendum, but would it have even required to fall under budget referendum based on some of the predictions of the, um, budget overruns for Birch Grove?
So, uh, I can answer most of that question, I think, and if not, Lisa knows here, too. Um, we, I know that Lisa and I have worked with our bond attorney to go over a couple of scenarios. Um, right now, with the way, I, I know we have a Birch Grove meeting on Thursday, and obviously, as you heard from Katie earlier, there might be some issues, but formally, we haven't, we're not over forty-six million yet. Um, I, I don't know when that final number will eventually shake out, but assuming that it's over forty-six and the council decides they want to move forward in some way to raise the ceiling of the forty-six million dollar project, the bond attorney that we work with has a couple of options that, that he's laid out for us. Um, I don't know how much you want to get into tonight, and perhaps maybe we should, you know, that's for another night, but there's op- there's multiple funding sources that could be used. Um, if it is debt, if it is bonding, then you're right, that one of the executive orders has, uh, currently, um, made impermissible a referendum. And instead, it would fall back to council to make that decision after having a public hearing. Um, so that is the metric. I think we're talking, you would probably need a, uh, a meeting to set a public hearing and then an additional meeting to have the public hearing. Um, so that means you'd have to have some lead time there to, to map it out on the calendar. But, um, that's, again, assuming the council wants to go down that road and doesn't want to use a funding source such as fund balance or something else that doesn't require debt.
Or that they don't get back to forty-six million.
Yeah.
Yeah, full intent.
And I assume that if, if we were to have to go back to bonding, there might be fees associated with the reissuance of bonds. I think that might be a question for Lisa, that we, there might be a little bit more wiggle room we'd need on top of whatever that overage was.
You mean to talk about the grand levy, the five percent grand levy number?
Um, maybe not. Maybe I'm, maybe I'm confused, at least in terms of if we had to change the reissuance of the bonds for the projects, that there may be some additional fees for that.
Um, you're probably talking about like bond sale fees, things, issuance costs, things like that.
Yeah, that's it. Thank you for clarifying, Lisa.
It, it may or may not. I mean, it's all going to play into how quickly we'll need the cash, and if it could be incorporated into the, the normal bond sale that we would be doing for the project. There may be a little bit, um, extra charged, and we built that into the, the numbers that we, we gave the committee for them to try to get all their final numbers together. Um, it's all going to depend on, again, if I have to go out for some short-term loans or issuing bonds on the same schedule.
Okay. Thank you, Lisa. And that, that ends my, uh, requests and questions. Thank you.
Um, Brenda?
Yes, so, um, can we take a look a, a little bit at, um, Mike, what your perspective is on cost savings? If there ends up being some items that we can put on this project that we're paying eleven cents on the dollar for now, instead of maybe having to do them in three or four years, doesn't that, I mean, doesn't that really save us an awful lot of money for the town depending on the price tag? Um, for example, I, I believe someone was talking once about the, um, repaving the, uh, driveway. Um, if that's something that comes out of this project, um, because we want to get it down below a certain number, having to bond for that in four or five years when it was originally on the schedule, um, at the full price instead of eleven cents on the dollar, that doesn't seem like we're being very responsible to our taxpayers' money. Um, is there, you know, and what, what, what is your suggestion? What is your perspective on cost savings trying to obtain as much as we can right now, so we're not making the pack taxpayers pay even more while we're still in a recovery period?
Um, that's a good question. I know that I've spoken with the chair of the building committee and also Bev, who's the municipal liaison to the building committee. Um, I would say that, in my opinion, I think the building committee is working on what they're doing right now to try to get the, the GMP, um, to the lowest possible number that is, whether it's forty-six million dollars or not. And, um, I would probably want to weigh in on what the overage would be and try to do the math on it like you're suggesting. I mean, I think, just like you said, eleven cents on the dollar. I know Katie has called it an eighty-nine percent coupon before, which I thought was, was an interesting phrasing. So, um, the, uh, uh, clearly, like you said, I don't know how much that paving project is scheduled to be, maybe like three hundred thousand dollars or so. But obviously, paying eleven percent of three hundred thousand dollars is going to be less money than paying a hundred percent of three hundred thousand dollars and adding the debt to the books. So, um, I, I, I'm certainly comfortable working through the finances once the building committee, um, uh, finalizes their GMP number and says, this is, this is the low as we can go, and, uh, and, and this is what, this is in the best interest of the town and all of that. Um, and I know that the superintendent also is, is looking at it in this lens as well for, you know, what the, the best, um, bang for the buck is going to be. Um, so, uh, I know, uh, the building committee can't talk about going over the forty-six million dollars. Um, but if they do see an opportunity where it would be favorable for us to pay eleven percent rather than a hundred percent, I'm sure we're going to hear about that at a future council meeting. So, um, you know, I, I don't have a specific answer for you. I think we need to see sort of the list of, uh, expenses that could potentially be pulled out of the project to get it to forty-six million, and then do the math on it to say, okay, here's a hundred percent of what we're going to pay versus eleven percent of what we're going to pay and put that side by side.
Absolutely. The first thing.
Is that going to come to the town council, though, or is that going to be the, the building committee making that decision prior to coming to us? So, you know, basically, they would be making a, a decision on, no, you don't get the opportunity to, to save money because we've decided to cut this out of the project?
Um, I believe that, so the building committee makes a recommendation to the town council. Um, so I think at the end of the day, it's going to be council's decision about the finance, uh, angle to this. So, uh, if the council wants it to stay at forty-six, or if it wants it to go over forty-six, I believe is, that's in your jurisdiction, not in the building committees, um, they will, they will be proposing, um, cuts, or, uh, I believe, and again, I don't want to misquote, I know Katie's not on the meeting now, but, um, a menu option for the council to understand, similar to what I said about what, what could come out of the project to get to forty-six, and then, um, and then what that cost would be to have to bond that later versus paying eleven percent now. And I, I think that's the strategy, and I, I know there's a couple of hands up, I saw. I don't know.
Yeah, so I just want to be clear, we're going to have the final say before, you know, going to cut first, and then we get no opportunities to make choices, correct?
My understanding is that there's a menu option, I believe. That's, that's what, um, Katie has called it. So they, I, I think they're going to do what they can do to get it to as low as they can go, and then if there's still an overage, I think they're going to present the building committee through its chair, maybe through its vice chair as well. I'm not sure if, who's going to present it to us, but they will present and say, um, here's where we're at right now, and do you want us to, um, make it, you know, this, this is as low as we can get it. Now it's in your ballpark, what you want to do with it. I mean, there's obviously some things in there that are outside the building versus inside the building that might be, uh, not mandatory for the, for the educational specifications of the project there, but they would be good to have on day one, and, um, that's the decision that council's going to have to make.
Yeah. Eh, I, I still have the concern that items that we have the opportunity to save our taxpayers lots of money on are going to be cut from the project before we get a chance to look at it. Um.
Brenda, if I may, as, as, as the liaison, this is Lou Lubin, as the liaison and being involved in these discussions, that forty-six million, if it goes above be- above and beyond the forty-six million, then it goes at the town council. Since the forty-six million was already approved, if the, if the committee brings it down below that forty-six million, then that's the co- that's the building committee's decision. They were appointed by the town council. They were given that a- authority inside their charter. So, so long as we, so long as the, uh, building committee stays within that parameters of forty-six million, whatever decision the building committee makes, that's, that's it. It's only, if it goes above and beyond that forty-six million, then that's when the town council gets involved.
Thank you, Lou. I appreciate that explanation, and that just highlights my worry that we're going to miss an opportunity, um, that the building committee is going to cut everything down under forty-six million, and we're going to be losing the opportunity to save taxpayer money over the next few years, that we're going to come back to them and say, these are things that are needed that weren't in Birch Grove, uh, building, and now I'm going to ask you to pay a hundred percent instead of eleven cents on the dollar. That's where my concern is.
Understood, understood, but also, these were people that the town council appointed for this committee. So, uh, I mean, that's, that's somebody that the town council had previously had faith in, uh, to do their job and do their due diligence. And so that's, that, that everybody here is taking their, uh, their position very seriously. But I think that's something that can be addressed, uh, on the Birch Grove committee meeting, uh, this coming Thursday.
I encourage everyone to go to the meeting. There's one opportunity for public participation. Um, you can speak then. Let the committee do their job and see where, where it all kind of sifts out. Um, so, any other, any other petitions from council persons at this point? I don't think that was actually, I don't know. Um, public list of participation on any subject within a jurisdiction of the town council, three-minute limit. If you're still on the phone and you have something you want to say, you can click on Raise Your Hand if you've joined via a device. If you are on a phone, star nine raises your hand. Um, if your hand is raised, I will call on you. Let's see. Uh, Nicole? Oh, Nicole, you'll have to state your name and address for the record also, please.
Nicole, you're still muted.
Thank you. Um, hi, everyone. Nicole Cole. I live at one twenty Kate Lane in Tallinn, and just wanted to say thank you to the council to, um, bringing up my email around the, uh, flag for, for pride and stuff. And I just wanted to say that, um, while I appreciate conversations are happening and stuff, I'm hoping to, you know, continue the conversation. Um, as, I think it's just really important, especially for this year, specifically around COVID. All pride, um, in-person events have been canceled. So I'm actually leading the statewide virtual pride going on, uh, with a bunch of people, which is awesome, but especially right now, a lot of towns are doing proclamations and flag raising as a small gesture, especially because we can't do anything in person, so it's a lot more meaningful. So I appreciate the conversation happening.
Thank you, Nicole. Uh, anybody else have anything? My thing is, I don't see anybody's hand up, but it's been acting up today, so. Anybody, anybody? Going once? Going twice? All right, Steve?
All right, Madam Chair, I entertain a motion to adjourn at approximately ten fifty-one PM.
This is Brenda Felucia, I second.
Okay, uh, any discussion? All those in favor? Brenda?
Hi.
Cassandra?
Hi.
Steve?
Hi.
Lou?
Hi.
Don?
Hi.
Bert?
Hi.
Me, too. It's unanimous. Everybody have a good night.
Thank you.
Good night.